Good evening. Welcome to the May 9th, 2022 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Craig.
Bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the beauty of this day and we thank you for the blessings you've given us this day and we pray, Heavenly Father, that we use those blessings all just honorably and for you, Heavenly Father. You give them to them and we need to use them wisely. We pray for our country. We pray for the leaders of our country. We love our country, Heavenly Father, and we want her to stay strong. And we pray for her and we pray for the Ukrainian situation, Heavenly Father. People are suffering there that we can't comprehend how it's going over there and we just put it all in your hands. So there's a lot of things in life, Heavenly Father, that we do just have to put in your hands. It's certainly beyond our control. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Call the roll, please, Tanya. Call the roll, please, Tanya.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater. Lee Bogle. David Jones. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Charlotte P. Chip Inyon. Pettis Reed.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you, Tanya. This time I'll call on our Vice Chair Pettis Reed for the reading of our April the 11th meeting minutes. Pettis?
Mr. Chairman, I have read through the minutes. I have found no errors. At this time, I ask that they be approved as written.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve our April the 11th meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. We have no items that have been withdrawn or deferred. Getting into our business, our new business tonight, item 6A, we have three items that have been submitted for rezoning request. Let me go ahead and make the announcement. You guys may want to make a note of this. This body is a recommending body. The full county commission will make final decisions. This body will recommend all three of these requests to the full county commission on Thursday, June 16th, here in this courtroom, Thursday, June 16th. Item 6AA, REZ 22-012, Timothy Whitlock. Location is 5285 and 5317 Woodbury Pike. Commission district is four. The county commissioner is Robert P. Size of the site is approximately 2.8 acres. Tax map is 104. Existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CG for commercial general. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and good evening, everyone. The first of three rezoning requests we have tonight is, as you stated, by Mr. Timothy Whitlock for property located along Woodbury Pike. The location of this probably looks pretty familiar to the planning commission. Track three, you can see on the map there, you've got tracks one and two, which are up for consideration tonight. Track three was just rezoned to commercial general earlier this year. According to information submitted by the applicant, and all this information is also on your iPads, they plan to construct two office buildings on the subject property. The building at 5285 Woodbury Pike would be for the applicant's landscaping business and then the other property would be for his foundation contracting business. Minimal equipment storage on either lot. He does anticipate a maximum of 10 employees at each business. Typical operating hours Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. with some occasional Saturday hours, excuse me, but nothing on Sunday. Again, he had a fairly detailed submittal package and I've scanned that and put that in with your agenda packet so you can skim through that at your leisure. Concept plans have been included, again, with your, on your iPads for both of those sites. Both of these properties are completely within the 100-year floodplain as delineated by FEMA. The applicant understands that if this application is approved, they would have to submit an engineered site plan and that would have to be submitted to us for our review and also for planning commission consideration. Access would be from Woodbury Pike. Things like the required number of parking spots, parking lot design, access would all be determined by the requirements of the zoning ordinance and shown on the engineered plan should this be approved. This would also include truck turning templates to ensure access for emergency vehicles, deliveries, et cetera. No traffic study has been performed at this time for these since it's a conventional zone, not a planned development, but we do have the ability to require one at the site plan stage should we feel one is needed. Properties located in commercial zones are required to provide a type 2 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned properties. This would require buffering on the east side as it's still going to be zoned residentially, but the other sides, not so much. They would be free from the buffering requirement because they'd be adjacent to other commercially zoned property. And performance standards would also apply. There are several existing businesses along Woodbury Pike. There's also an existing retail, Dollar General, located about 660 feet to the south of the property along John Bragg Highway. This property, as is the one, track three, that we rezoned a few months ago, is within the Village Neighborhood Center that's shown on the comprehensive plan, which does contemplate these type of uses. Again, I stated this earlier, but it is within 100-year floodplain, so of course, we would take careful look at that should this be approved and we see a site plan. With that, be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present.
Any questions for staff at this time? The applicant here. Please come forward. Would name an address for the record. You would give us a brief explanation of what you intend to do.
Okay. My name is Tim Whitlock. I own two businesses. I'm needing new locations for these businesses because they're growing and I think these would be good lots for what I'm trying to do. Plan on putting two shop buildings there that will mainly be offices and have storage space in the back of the buildings. The construction business is a general contracting business. We're doing foundations right now. I go to get my GC license tomorrow, so we're going to become a general contracting business. And for my landscaping business, we pretty much sub everything out, so we don't have employees coming in and out every day. It's just a office for managers and everybody to meet. But that's what I plan to do here and that's really all I have to say.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant while he's here?
Can you tell us a little bit about truck traffic, if any, and how much, what size trucks, that sort of thing?
Okay. So we might have shipments come in once a month to once a week, just depending on how much material we need. It would probably be, we might have a few dump trucks come through, like we're probably going to store mulch and sand and, you know, gravel occasionally, so we'll have some trucks like that come through. Other than that, it would pretty much just be vehicles of the managers and people that work there, but the trucks, the dump trucks wouldn't come through every day. It would be about a once a week to once a month thing.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you. We're ready for our public hearing. This time I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 22-012 Timothy Whitlock. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one rising, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners. Doug, you okay?
I believe we are. Again, this was, there is commercial not far from it and again, that adjacent track that you see on the screen, commercial general, that was just rezoned within the last couple of months, so this is no different than that.
I make motion approve. A motion and a second to approve, including staff comments. Other questions or comments? Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve REZ 22-012 for Timothy Whitlock. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6AB, REZ 22-013, Steve Pierce for Middle Tennessee Developers. Location is Central Valley Road. Commission district is 14. County commissioner is Virgil Gammon. Size of the site is approximately 68 acres. Tax map is 47. The existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, and this will be a residential development. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Central Valley Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a residential development on the property. It's, in your staff comments there, I put a little table. It's comprised both of single-family detached and attached products. You'll see that the attached product, about 101 units, which is about 1,400 square foot minimum and two-bedroom minimum. And the detached product would be 1,800 square foot minimum, again, with a two-bedroom minimum, total number of units being 159. The attached units will have a minimum of a one-car front garage, front entry garage, whereas the detached would have a minimum of a two-car front entry. All units will have driveways adequate for four parking spaces. Elevations will be made up of masonry materials with vinyl only permitted in the trim and soffit areas. Sidewalks and street lighting are also being provided, sidewalks on both sides of the street, and development will be served with a step system. The single-family detached product roughly surrounds, Mike's got the concept plan there, roughly surrounds the attached product separately to the east, as you can see on the concept plan. A portion of the amenity area will also buffer this development along the southeast corner. You'll see on that map that Mike is showing, there's actually been two developments approved, one to the south, Urban Landing, I believe it's called. That was a single-family detached product, about the same lot sizes as what is being shown in the pattern book before you today. And then right to the east, the crossings at East Fork, I think is what it's called. Sorry, I just don't have it right in front of me. Let's see, crossings of Walter Hill, excuse me. And again, they have a similar type mixture with a single-family attached and detached product as part of their development, as well as a small commercial element that Mike's kind of highlighting there at the corner of Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road. RM district does allow for a maximum of 2.9 units per acre. You'll see that their gross density is 2.3, which is lower than that. Using that number with just residential medium density, you could, in theory, get about 200 units out of there. However, that's not practical once you put in, or take out, I should say, the area for step system, roads, easements, detention areas, et cetera. A more typical development yield in the RM really is between one and one and a half units an acre, so a more realistic yield in the RM would be somewhere between 68 and 102 units, just to give you a little bit of context there. The development does have its primary access along Central Valley Road. There are going to be secondary access points to the south where Mike's pointing out, and that is into the Urban Landing development, and then also to the east with the crossings at Walter Hill. Of course, the concept plans at this point may or may not match completely as far as where those stubs are, but once one development is in, that'll kind of lock the location for the others, so they'll just have to kind of plan around that. We'll make sure that if this is approved, that those connections are made. A traffic study was also performed as part of this request. Turn lane improvements are being proposed as part of the project along Central Valley Road. The applicant has also entered into agreement with the developer of the track to the east for improvements to the intersection at Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road, which would include turn lanes and also signalization. We feel that that'll help that area quite a bit, especially considering the Liberty Valley, Liberty Station developments in the city right to the west of the subject property. Buffering is generally not required between single-family developments. The layout of the property does show stream buffers around the northern and western property lines. Of course, the step area will buffer the western side of the development and the applicant is also proposing a six-foot privacy fence between the male kiosk lot and adjacent residential structure. Now, there's a lot right there in that area. Well, actually, I think they moved it since the, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, that existing residential structure there, so where Mike's highlighting that red line there on the, on the plan. There are also amenity areas scattered throughout the proposal, as you can see on the concept plan. With that, again, we talked about the densities are consistent with the recommendations of the county's comprehensive plan and the product offerings are similar to developments that have been approved both to the south and to the east. The applicant is present and I believe wants to make a presentation, so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, please.
Sure.
Doug, it looks like in their pattern book, they're showing sidewalks on both sides
That's correct.
of the road. The 100-year floodplain line on the north part, are there going to be any critical lots proposed there or is that something to be determined later, you think?
It doesn't appear, but I'll let Mike kind of handle that.
It looks like it's real close, but.
Right. These lots on the north side of the unnamed tributary will need to be elevated to protect it from flooding.
And these will all be county road. They're not private. These are county roads.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff at this time?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Want to make sure this new microphone is working. There's an awful lot here to read through. I'm sure you guys have studied. Can we talk a little bit about, tell me a little bit about the parking for the town homes? I see these are single-car garages. Width of the driveways and additional parking spaces so that we're not piled up on the street?
Right. The pattern book does state that all the driveways will be able to accommodate four vehicles. Now, like you said, you know, the attached product only is proposing one-car driveways that detached is proposing two, but with the four cars in the driveway, that will accommodate quite a bit and Mike's highlighting several parking areas scattered throughout, especially around the attached product to help any, you know, visitor parking, some overflow parking there in those little lots.
So are they getting the four cars by having an additional setback, an unusually deep setback, 40 feet or something? How are they, how are they going to get four cars in the driveway? I'm trying to figure.
Sorry, my pattern book opened. Just flipping over here. I don't believe the setbacks really are any difference. The garages could just be recessed a little bit, which would allow them a little, a few extra feet, if anything. Mike's got something on the screen there. Yeah, it looks like the, yeah, the driveways are, I mean, they've got the 30-foot, 35-foot front setback is what you're looking at. I mean, all the way back to the, to the road. And it looks like, I'm sorry, the internal site for the detached product, they are, the setbacks are a little closer, but the garages are set back a little bit to allow the four cars.
Other questions for staff? The applicant present?
Matt Taylor from SEC. I don't have a formal presentation. I think Doug did a good job going over the booklet. We did on the townhouse parking, we've made every driveway two cars wide and we pushed them back so two cars could stack behind each other as well. And we've also scattered visitor parking throughout that part of the development. Think Mike had pointed out a couple of spots on the screen, so we tried to distribute those. We've got about five different visitor parking areas plus visitor parking at the end of each cul-de-sac there. So we've got an abundance of visitor parking in addition to the driveway parking as well.
Now, these cul-de-sacs will be private streets, right?
No, everything here is a public street, Mike, even the cul-de-sacs.
HOA restrictions deal with parking in the street?
If, if you're okay with that, we'd be happy to put that into HOA restrictions. I'm not sure that we can govern what goes on in the public street. That's the only part I'm not certain about, so.
I'm not so sure that we can't request that it be in the HOA bylaws.
We can certainly put that in there.
Matt, something else. In those cul-de-sacs, it looks like you've got some 90-degree parking. If those are going to be public roads, we kind of frown on that.
Just do it dedicated. Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Questions of the applicant? Very good. Stay close.
Yes, sir. Chairman Phillips, if I may add something?
Mike, please do.
Okay. Just to follow up with what Doug had mentioned earlier about the traffic study, we knew these three developments were coming pretty close together, so we asked them to evaluate all of these three developments at the same time, developing together. We looked at, from the traffic signal at Jefferson Pike on 231 State Route 10, Lebanon Pike, all the way down to, I believe Cherry Lane, right here by the soccer park, and then all the way from Central Valley all the way into several of these intersections around Liberty Station, Liberty Valley. And it was found out that the, if anybody knows the area, the intersection at Central Valley and Lebanon Pike is in need of a traffic signal right now. So they've agreed, these two developers have agreed to go in on installing a traffic signal and dedicated right-left turn lanes. There is a northbound left turn lane on Lebanon Pike right now and a southbound D cell right lane already on Lebanon Pike. So what they'll be adding is turn lanes in this area with, along with the traffic signal. The site entrance will also have traffic signal, not, sorry, turn lanes. They probably just heart skipped a beat right there. But let me get back a little bit. The traffic study said that they did not need a left turn lane here, but we thought that when the traffic signal comes online, we're going to see a lot more traffic used in this road to get out to Lebanon Pike. So we've asked them to go ahead and install a left turn lane into the site and they've agreed to that, so we're happy with that. Yes, right. Likewise with the other one on the corner, what was the name of that?
Crossing.
The crossings at Walter Hill, this one here. So they will also have left turn lanes into the site to help, help with facilitate, get traffic off the roads. And like I said, we've got some tweaking to do with the connection points. Doug is right. Whoever gets here first, I guess, sets the mold and everybody have to build to it, but the urban property in the south, I believe, is pretty good with their connection here. Drainage, they'll have, let me see. A large stormwater detention area there and I was thinking, yes, a small one on the other side to pick up this development on this side. There is a unnamed tributary to East Fork, Stones River. They will have to build a substantial box culvert bridge here with, with their main road in. But other than that, oh, there's another detention pond over here. I believe that's all the stormwater. Y'all have any questions for me? I'll be happy to try to answer some, too.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike at this time? Are there anything specific on the TVA easement?
There, there is an easement through this development. I believe, what is it, 75 feet wide. TVA has removed the line, but there is still, on the utility layer, there still is a sewer force main. See this yellowish, orange-ish-yellow dash line? That essentially follows along the TVA easement and that is a sewer force main that goes all the way up to the Walter Hill Elementary School up at Jefferson Pike. So we'll have to work closely with that and make sure that, that's not damaged or any, anything like that, so. And then it goes into the city sewer system.
I will say too, Mike, if you could pull up that concept plan, on the concept plan there is a, you can kind of see going east to west on the site, there is an old 50-foot existing sewer easement that's going to be abandoned as part of this. I'm not sure what exactly that was at one time. Maybe it was part of that force main, I don't know, but there's an old easement that's there, but they'd have to work, you know, with the city again, just like with the other to abandon all that, especially if there's not a line there.
Very good. Other questions? Ready for our public hearing? This time I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 22-013, Steve Pierce for Middle Tennessee Developers. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners. Staff recommendation is to approve?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Douglas, did we say we were going to, these were going to become private streets or the cul-de-sacs or were, I thought that's what they were?
Well, no, they're going to be public, but they'll, they'll need to.
Need to remove that parking.
Right. They'll need to do something different.
Just a sidebar, we have been talking with Josh Sanders, the fire marshal. Our cul-de-sacs, I've found out, are not large enough for the fire code, so we're going to be updating that to make larger cul-de-sacs to accommodate the larger turning radius of fire trucks, school buses and things like that.
How do these fit into that?
They will be required to follow that, that standard.
Very good. And we'll talk.
Even if these were private streets, we would have to, they would still need to meet that requirement.
Yeah, and we plan on bringing that up under other business during our day meeting for further discussion, so.
Thank you. Yes. Sorry. Public hearing is over. I'll make an exception. If you want, if you want to make a comment, come forward. It's okay. We've been around. If you need, you need to submit your name.
I live in Liberty Valley, Liberty Station.
Speak in the mic, please.
My question is, I noticed that you mentioned some roads that we're going to be changing. My question is the road when you come off of, it's Central Valley, basically, the other side of Central Valley, when you pass our neighborhood, where it basically becomes a swamp. It's a very narrow bridge. I'm just wondering, is there going to be any, anyone to address that bridge? Because right now, it's very hectic. When the school buses come in the morning, we all come to a stop and I've had moments where I've had to back up. And so with the increased traffic, because most of the people will be coming off of 840 down that road, I was just wondering, is there going to be any expansion or some way to make that specific area any safer?
I wasn't aware it was a problem. We could talk with the highway superintendent after the meeting and talk to him about it.
Go look at that.
But it shows 21 feet are standard.
It's, I don't think that's it. It's when you come, right before you hit the neighborhoods. Keep coming from Sulfur Springs, you pass down.
Going west.
New development on the left, I think it's like Mary Bell or something.
You're talking actually on the other side, not here, but on the other side.
On the other side.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yeah, on the other side.
Up and around.
If you were coming from 840, you would get off on Sulfur Springs, you'd pass that intersection and keep coming around before you hit those fields of like the protected preservation area. It's that bridge right before that.
Gotcha. I think that has been annexed into the city, but I could be wrong.
But we're going to have like, I mean, you, you mentioned quite a few more units and more traffic, so that's also going to bring a lot more.
Are you talking about around this corner?
Yes. I believe that's.
Okay. Yeah, I think that has been annexed into the city.
I believe that's it. But it's, it's a swampy area, and it's a very narrow bridge. You can't miss it. If you drive down that road, it's very distinct.
It's kind of in a curve, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And it, it starts actually a little bit further, headed back towards, that whole area is very-
Okay. This, this green area is within the city limits, so we'll have to have a conversation with them about that.
That was my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, it appears they've done their homework. I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Deacon. We have a motion and a second to approve REZ 22-013, Steve Pierce for Middle Tennessee Developers, and that includes all staff comments. Any other questions? Concerns? Once again, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6AC, REZ 22-014, Dustin Dousten Estates, Estes, I'm sorry, for SFG Murfreesboro. Location is Sulfur Springs Road, Commission District is 3, the County Commissioner is Michael Rather. The site of the site is approximately 157 acres. Tax map is 48 and 57. Existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a planned unit development, PUD for industrial development. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. These properties, I know will look familiar to most of you. We've have, had been, these properties have been the subject of several discussions over the past many years. Most recently, back in December of 2020, the request they brought at that time was for a similar development that, what you're looking at to the current application, just smaller, or larger at that time. About 2.2 million square feet is what they were asking for at the time. Following the public hearing, the planning commission did recommend denial of the request, and the applicant decided not to move the application forward to the Board of Commissioners. In your packets, on your iPads, I did include the minutes from that meeting, just for your reference. The applicant has since met with staff on this current application, and they did have their required neighborhood meeting for this property back on April 7th of this year. Some of the concerns that did come from the meeting included traffic, especially in the Sulfur Springs Road, 18840 interchange area, and drainage. There wasn't a lot of opportunity to dialogue, it was a pretty contentious meeting. The current pattern book that you have, and in the pattern book, I will say that one of the last pages in the development booklet does show the previous application, and then, of course, you can compare that to the one that they're showing tonight. The current pattern book does show two buildings on the site, the largest of which is about 1.1 million square feet, and the smaller about 260,000 square feet, so you're looking at somewhere between 1.3, 1.4 million square feet. No specific user identified, but the pattern book does state a local business that has a manufacturing business in Smyrna and a distribution building in Wilson County. There's also a range of uses identified in the pattern book on page 8, at least it was page 8 when I originally wrote this. Some uses have been specifically prohibited, including wrecker services, heavy equipment rental services, and truck stops. They are proposing a maximum building height of 50 feet, which is normally 40 for the light industrial and 50 for heavy industrial zones. Floor area ratio is proposed to be .75, which is normally 1.0. That's basically the, the ratio of the amount of floor space you have in the building versus the amount of land area that you have. And the building setbacks are shown to be a minimum 150 feet along Shacklet Road and the southwest boundary, and then 50 feet from I-840, Sulfur Springs Road, and all residential boundaries. Again, I'll refer you to the pattern book for additional details. This project will access Sulfur Springs Road, as you can see from the concept plan. They are showing a 60-foot wide right-of-way that will terminate in a cul-de-sac, which the applicant does plan to build to county standards and eventual acceptance as a county road, again, should this application be approved. The remaining access drives and parking areas on the property would be private. I will point out, you can see that there is no access onto Shacklet Road, nor is there any access onto Walnut Lane, which would be to the west. When you look at this, north is actually pointing to your right, just to give you a little bit of reference on that. The applicant and staff have had conversations with TDOT officials regarding the access to Sulfur Springs Road to clarify what is TDOT right-of-way and what is not. The applicant has completed a traffic study, and the recommendations are found on page 13 of the pattern book. Essentially, they are proposing turn lane improvements into the development, as well as some turn lane improvements also to the on-ramps to I-840 off of Sulfur Springs Road. Part of the development team, I do believe, is going to go into a little more detail as far as the traffic improvements are concerned. Employee parking is shown on the northern and southern sides of both buildings, with additional parking on the western side of the smaller building. Parking lot and access roads would be designed to, by, I'm sorry, would be designed by the requirements of our zoning ordinance, and of course, demonstrated on an engineered site plan, again, should this application be approved. This would also include truck turning templates to ensure adequate access for emergency vehicles. I didn't go into this, but earlier in the staff report, our county fire marshal provided several comments as far as, you know, should this be approved? Again, the buildings would require automatic fire sprinklers, they have to be built to RCFR specifications, and several permits would be required. That is within your comments. If you've got additional questions on that, I'd be more than happy to talk about that in more detail. Industrially zoned properties are required to install a type 3 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. This PUD is for an industrial development, so we would apply those same development standards to this. Their pattern book does show a 50-foot wide, what they're calling a preservation or conservation easement around most of the property, and also landscape buffering around the western portion of the site. They're also showing 150-foot setback buffer along the southwest corner of the property and along Shacklet Road. There's also an area at the northern end of the property to the west of the access point that would need alternative screening requirements, because there's just not enough room there. Originally, they were proposing an eight-foot privacy fence. They have since changed that with the revised pattern book here that you have on your iPads to be a 12-foot masonry, basically sound barrier wall, is what they're showing, where Mike is highlighting there on the, on the screen. And of course, our performance standards would have to be adhered to as well. Of course, we, under my staff recommendations, you know, I said, staff understands the applicant's desire to market this property, and feels that the comprehensive plan generally supports this type of development near an interstate interchange. The applicant has proposed various architectural and buffering standards that will apply regardless of the final design. This proposal is smaller, as you can tell, from the original PUD request back in 2020, but it's still at a pretty hefty scale. It'll still be the largest in the immediate area, which can have an impact on traffic and also drainage patterns. Should this be approved, it would need to include the traffic improvements identified in their traffic study, as well as described in their pattern book. Drainage, stormwater management is always a concern. This property is impacted by the 100-year flood plan, and also deals with a lot of sinkhole-type drainage, and Mike's going to go into a little bit more detail with that. With that, that's just an overview of the project. I know the development team will have their own presentation, and we're, of course, available for comments as well. But with that, I'll be happy to answer a question, or Mike, if you want to go into the drainage now, or?
Well, yeah, we can. This, this area is quite a challenging area. It is part of a sinkhole watershed. A lot of Rutherford County does not drain to, directly to rivers, creeks, and streams. This is a map from a study that USGS did back in 2001, and I will zoom in and kind of show you where we're at. This is 840 here. This is Thompson Lane, Lebanon Pike 231, right here. Let's see. So the development, it's not really clear on here. This is Hooper Bottoms, if you know where that is, in the bend of Thompson Lane, right there. I think the Bethel Church is right in this area. So the development is kind of in this lower end of this sinkhole watershed. So what happens in, in these sinkhole watersheds, you can have a rain event in one area of the watershed, and water can come out in the other into the watershed. So it is a volume-sensitive area that we have to be very careful with when we look at any, any plan, any development in these, these areas. So what we ask for the development team to do is, on the front end, is look at volume-sensitive, volume requirements. So what kind of water leaves the site before it's developed? What amount or volume of water leaves the site after it's developed? And can we hold this back? Can we control this, this runoff and manage it so it does not impact the neighboring properties or any, any, anybody else in the area? So there is, there is on the city of Murfreesboro's website, they've accumulated a lot of dye testing. So we, we've got a local geologist, Dr. Albert Ogden, that has done a lot of dye tracings in the areas, along with other scientists. So, but what they, what they'll do is put dye in a sinkhole and be able to trace it, track it where it goes, where it comes out. So this is part of that same sinkhole watershed that I was showing you earlier, right in this area here. So here's Hooper Bottoms, it's a massive sinkhole, if you know where that is, in the Thompson Lane elbow, right there. So that's, that's this area right here, is Hooper Bottoms. So they, the red is where they placed dye in the ground, and the blue is where they've tracked it out. Now, water won't, won't, you know, go in a straight line, but this is the general direction that it travels. So they, they've tracked, traced where the water will go in this area, and it comes out at, right at the river, and, right in this, in the east, excuse me, West Fork, or the Stones River. They, they've traced it coming out right here. So if you think about it, I've got a daughter that loves pasta, she makes macaroni cheese all the time, she'll set the pasta strainer in the sink, and it fills up with water. So this watershed, it's a kind of oversimplification of it, but when the river's up, these sinkholes stay up, and they don't drain out until that, that river comes down. So they're all interconnected, and that's something that we're asking them to closely look at, so we're not impacting any of the surrounding neighbors. The earlier versions of the plan, I was not as comfortable with. They had a massive warehouse, let me go back to the map. There's a massive warehouse that they originally planned. Let me turn off some of this and turn on topography. There's a large box culvert that crosses 840, right in this area. Water flows across this property, and then flows on to some of these sinkholes on this side. So earlier, the plan was this massive warehouse here. The new plan has got it divided up into one large warehouse on one side, a smaller warehouse on the other side. There's the, the box culvert, right here. There's a massive sinkhole on this side. This has to fill up and then build out, spill over, but they're planning around this continuing to flow and, and treating their water on other sides. So we don't have a final design, but we've got a lot more room to work with stormwater management. You've got this, this area that's allowed to continue to flow, and they can hold back their water on this side. The previous development that was submitted with a large 2 million-plus warehouse was counting on stormwater pumps and force mains and all that, so I didn't feel too confident about that. They do have more of a green, open space area that they can work on managing their stormwater. We don't, like I said, we don't have a final design, but they do have a more workable area back in here. So if you do know this area, it is definitely wrought with challenges. Several times, this Sulfur Springs had, roads have been closed, and I'll go back to May 2010 flood, one of the times. Got water crossing Sulfur Springs. This is part of that dirty dishwasher water with the pasta strainer in it. That water doesn't go down until the river goes down. So these are all interconnected sinkholes. Water crosses Sulfur Springs in several places. Buckeye Bottom, I believe it might have crossed there, too. So there are several sinkholes in this area, and this is towards the lower end of this watershed. The water's all migrating kind of northwest, in and out of these sinkholes, until it leaves this northwest tip, right here, in this area. And there's also, I would imagine, other groundwater connections through here as well. But the, the water's all migrating from this southeast and going northwest. So their development is right in this area here. So that's something that we will closely have to look at with the design team. Like I said, I'm feeling the opportunity to, to manage the stormwater a lot better. It's still an issue in this area, but that's something that we, as the planning and engineering staff, look at, is we don't want any development, whether the industrial, residential, commercial, anything, to impact the surrounding neighborhoods. That's, that's what we work diligently with. So that's, that's part of the recap. I think they brought a consult, one of their consultant engineers here to talk about drainage. So that's, that's, I'm sure he'll provide more information on that, but I just want to stress that that's something we'll look at very, very, very carefully if this is, if this is approved for this rezoning package, or any, any development. So if this were to come back as, as residential drainage and traffic are two of the big things that we look at. I can go into traffic if you want to, or, or let the consultant do their part, but what, I will say a little bit. We asked them to look at Sulfur Springs, but also on the east side, this intersection here is a challenge, and most of the residents know this, this intersection well. It is a three-way stop. It has a, a horizontal and vertical curve to it. So traffic queues up on this, and evenings can, can back up into 840. Likewise, in the morning, in the opposite direction. So the, the highway department has made some striping improvements. If, if you're familiar with this area, before, the stop bars were a lot farther back, and it was kind of difficult to see whose turn it was. They brought them forward. The traffic, traffic study says it does not warrant a traffic signal. I think it does. That's, that's my opinion. This is planned to be why- This is planned to be widened to five lanes eventually, but who knows when that will happen? It's on the, the city's major thoroughfare plan. What needs to happen is it needs to be straightened out through here and these two houses purchased and removed. If we had a traffic signal here, traffic could free flow, uh, east and west. And then if, if we had someone that needed to come north and, um, turn left or right, the traffic signal could, could queue and stop the, the flow of traffic coming off the eight, uh, 840. That's, that's one area that I've asked them to look at. The traffic studies again says it does not warrant a traffic signal, uh, but with traffic that queues up and into the, the eight forty, I, I don't know if I agree with that. They are proposing, I believe, to make some improvements on this, um, ramp to allow for, for the, uh, a queue for left turns and for right turn lanes here. And again, they are proposing to do some, um, add the left turn lanes at their entrance And have the main drive coming in. They've, they've talked with TDOT on that. This is a controlled access zone, um, as long as they're not in this diagonal area here, just in this area here, they, uh, TDOT says they're okay. But, um, what we're kind of concerned about is traffic going west on sulfur springs. I've asked the highway superintendent, um, to come and, and talk with us. He's had to make some adjustments, um, to the weight capacity of this bridge. He's, um, discovered some issues with it that he's trying to work through. So he's had to lower the, the traffic, uh, the weight load of this, this bridge. So we're, we're concerned about anybody heading west on 24. Uh, they feel, the design team feels that they can, uh, require that all traffic go towards eight forty, uh, but that's, that might be a challenge well, as well, if, if someone's GPS tells them to go west on sulfur springs. There is a kind of an acute turn at sulfur springs in Florence. That we, uh, did discover an image with some trucks using, this is back in 2018. There's some, you know, tractor trailers using this road in this, this aerial image. So they are using it. You can see some tracking in this corner where trucks coming up and turning. Cut this corner sharp here. So, um, something else that we'll need to, uh, address, but until bridge is brought back up to its full strength, um, I think the highway superintendent has had to put signs at Florence Road and then all the way out at, uh, eight forty to let them know that this, this bridge is not at, uh, at full capacity. And you can kind of see potholes forming there. So that's, that's what we're trying to address right now is, is to fix this bridge. So that's a lot. I'm sorry, I tend to ramble sometimes, but, um, they, they do have their, their design team here to address a lot of these, these challenges. The, uh, drainage and traffic are, are two things that we look closely at and with any development, not just, uh, industrial. Uh, so any, anything that were to be developed here would be scrutinized, uh, just as well. Just to let you know that.
I believe Superintendent Brooks is here. Would, would you like to make any comments? It's a little bit of a reluctance to get up, so I'm not sure that that's a yes or I'll do it if you want me to.
I have a lot to add about the bridge other than what Mike has, has told you. We, we recently went out to address the potholes that you see in this picture right here. And in doing so, we, we discovered some, uh, some things with the bridge that we weren't too comfortable with. So I, I got a, uh, design engineer to come out that we've used before to take a look at it with me before we covered it back up because we milled all that old asphalt off. And we discovered that the, the concrete in the bridge deck was not up to what it should be. So I got an engineer to come and, uh, give us some direction on whether or not, uh, we should maybe lower the weight limit. This bridge previously was not posted, did not have a weight limit. So that means that, uh, by law, any legal load could cross this bridge. So if, if, for instance, if you had a truck that was carrying, uh, an oversized load, as long as he was permitted correctly, he could cross it as well. So we lowered it to, uh, 25 tons and, uh, that, that does not restrict a, uh, fully, the largest school bus that we have in the county can still cross this bridge safely. Uh, you know, and that's per the, the engineer's, uh, recommendation. And then, uh, they are currently putting together a engagement letter and we're going to, uh, bring them on to do a design for, uh, a rehab, a rehabilitation of this bridge. It's got some issues other than the concrete. It has some, some rust and some other things that, that need to be addressed as well. But that'll be a state aid project and as you all know, that takes a fair amount of time. So in the interim, we did lower the, uh, weight limit to 25 tons.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any questions for Mr. Brooks while he's here? Thank you. Mike, anything else? Doug, anything else?
We'll be happy to chime in if we have any questions for us.
Good evening, Commissioner Phillips, members of planning commission, Rob Mulch and SEC. I'm going to appreciate your time tonight and consideration in this matter. Um, I'm accompanied by my design team tonight, um, two of which are from the Stonemont Financial Group, who are the actual developers for this on that side, Dustin Estes and Lila Miles. I'm also accompanied tonight by Mr. Mark Lee, our head of design engineering for our hydrologic side of things on that side. Mr. Peter Schmidt with Barge Design, who did the traffic studies here as well on that side to answer any questions you may have in regards to the traffic study that was requisitioned that side. And also Mr. Sean Henry is here from Stonemont Group as well on that side. So, um, with that being said, I'd like to introduce Dustin to come up and talk a little bit about what Stonemont is before I get into my presentation so you understand who the developer is and what, you know, why their intentions are for this property on that side.
First, let me, uh, thank staff, thank, um, the commissioners. We appreciate your time, appreciate, um, always sitting here on a long, uh, hot night, listening to, uh, listening to all of this. Um, my name's Dustin Estes. I'm a senior vice president and partner at Stonemont Financial Group. We are a, um, we're a commercial real estate developer based in Atlanta. Um, we, we specialize in industrial real estate and we are heavy, um, in the southeast where we, we develop, we build, we represent, um, a handful of Fortune 500 clients and we go out and, um, you know, build requirements for, for them. If they need a building, we're looking for dirt and, and we put up a building for them simply said. Um, also we act as landlords, so we're, we stay in deals long-term, meaning we have relationships with our tenants, we have relationships with our clients and, um, and we like to stay in for the long haul. As we go around, um, the country, specifically the southeast and we look for, for good land sites, um, we typically start with a requirement from a tenant and that, that's how this very, but this, that's how this project came to be. Um, we have tenants and we have a couple users who have needs in this specific area. As we came across this site, we knew that it had a history. Um, we knew that it had been presented here, um, a couple times and had had its denials and had had its, its issues in the past. Stonemont, us, um, what we pride ourselves on, number one, is we like to come into a community and link arm and arm, number one, with the municipality, but number two, with, with the community and try to find what is the highest and best use for that land, for that dirt and for this project. Um, and, and that's what we feel we, we're doing here and what we've done. Before I ever signed a contract or even went under contract on this site, I wanted to make sure I understood fully, um, what this site has gone through and why it was denied and what the troubles might be with it. We, we understood there were, there's flooding issues, there was traffic issues, sound buffer issues, residents and, and, and people who, who may have issue with what might be built. Um, you know, folks who are passionate about possibly just keeping it raw land and, and a nice quiet piece. We understood that fully. And before I went under contract, I wanted to understand that and make sure we, Stonemont, could at least check off those boxes and, um, you know, and satisfy the, the commissioners here hopefully. And I really feel like we've done that. Um, between, you know, what was a 50-foot buffer is now somewhat a 250-foot buffer in some spots. Um, we've added a lot of retention. We attacked this site typically developers look at, at raw land and they say, how much building can I put on it? That, that, that's the sign of a successful developer. When we attacked this site, we looked at it and said, how can we solve the problems first and building second? And I will tell you, we've, we've shrunk the size of our building by probably 40% to accommodate, um, retention, sound buffers, traffic flow and, and a handful of the other things that we're dealing with here. So, um, long story short, know that we're, we're very active in the southeast. Um, Stonemont wants to work arm and arm here, um, with the community. Uh, as in terms of the user and, and who we may be bringing to this site, as I mentioned, we're, we're long-term landlords for a lot of tenants around the country. Um, we, we do, we are landlord for a tenant in, right here in Rutherford County, um, who has a large manufacturing presence here in Rutherford County and they are looking to expand within the county. And that's the user who we're here searching for. Um, and it's a Rutherford County business that wants to grow within Rutherford County. And I, I don't think that that can be understated, um, and possibly bringing 200 more jobs to, to the county. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a homegrown issue. So, um, we feel strongly about it. We feel that it's the right play and we feel that it's the highest and best use for this dirt, um, and, and for this property. Anything else about Stonemont? Um, again headquartered in Atlanta. We're, we're, we're active here and, um, and I'll be sitting here and be available for more questions, but I'll turn the time back over to Rob.
While Rob's coming back up, I just want to just make a note to the planning commissioners. The presentations that you'll see tonight, Mr. Mulch is going to give one, uh, one of the residents in the area also has one, uh, after, uh, he's done during the public hearing. I've put both of those on your iPads in case you want to follow along, have a little bit closer view. The PowerPoints that we're using here are probably higher quality than the PDF, so I apologize for that. I also did want to call your attention to, uh, some documentation that was sent to us by the, the applicant's team, uh, some letters of support for that, which are also on your iPads. I just want to make sure that you are aware that those are there as well. Thank you.
Hey Doug. Thank you Dustin. Okay, let me get the other one. I bet. All right. Thank you. All right. So this first slide here, this shows you generally, the general location, I think we're mostly, most of us are aware of what the situation is in this. This is the southwest corner of the intersection of eight forty and sulfur springs. Um, you can see there in the chart on the, on the, on the diagram up there, sulfur springs is to the north of the site. That's our main access point on that side. Uh, I think a point to look at in regards to this is also some of the major thoroughfare in regards to the city and county on that side. Sulfur Springs is at some point in time due, is to be deemed to be raised to a five-lane cross-section. Um, I think if you look at the bottom of the diagram on here, you see down here, this is the proposed Cherry Lane corridor that Murfreesboro has in their, in their very short-term roadway plans on that side. Um, so that will be another, um, roadway connection game changer for this portion of the county on that side. So the infrastructure, not only from the county, but also from the city on that side. So I just want to kind of point that out so everybody's aware of how close we are technically to where that new interchange may happen in regards to this interchange and the development that we're proposing tonight. This next slide here, it kind of is a precursor to the next slide after this. This kind of shows some of the, um, small businesses that are already in the area out here around the interchange on that side. Uh, so each of these little dots you see on here are either at-home businesses or actual fully functioning businesses. I think if you look to the east of the interchange on that side, you know Dollar General's over there, you have the mini storage. Um, and then kind of go into the next slide on that side. Um, this is the current zoning map that we have here in the county on that side. You can see the site in relationship to its proximity to the southwest corner on the eastern side of this within the past year or so, you guys have approved about two or three, if not four, potential rezonings to commercial services for properties on that side. So you do see between, when I look back at 2013's map and today's map, you're looking at about eight properties in the last eight years that have gone and changed over to some kind of commercial services or type of some kind of commercial use because people understand the importance of commercial and the usual development around the interchange for commercial elements on, on that side. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. Kind of moving to the next slide on that side, this is just a precursor to some discussions. This kind of shows all the different utilities we have in and around this site. Um, on the north side of the site, there's a, we have CD water on three edges of this. We have a 12-inch line on sulfur springs. There's a 20-inch line on Shacklet Road and there's a 48-inch line that parallels the interstate on our property. We have a 50-foot water line easement along the interstate on that side. So we have water services on all three edges of the property for us to provide water to this development on that side. Um, in the middle, you can see up here in the, on the drawing, we have the existing current TVA easement. You can see it running diagonally across the property on that side. That is just a paper easement, kind of like the previous joint, the previous project you guys just approved before. It's just a paper easement that TVA has on the property. Um, we have been working for the past three months under contract with TVA. We paid their fees in order to go through the process to modify the route of that easement on that side. So we're about three months into a 12-month process with them. So we've been working with their, their design team to look at options that would work for both us and TVA in regards to that paper easement that's on the property so that they still keep their easement in perpetuity. And it's designed so that if one day they ever did use that easement, use that easement, their, their towers and wires would work within that easement and work with our development if our development was to be approved on that side. So that's kind of where we're at on regards to the TVA side of things. Um, the next couple of slides, I'm going to kind of just go through this real quick. For me, I'll have, um, Mark Lee come up here in a little while to kind of talk about the flooding on that side that we, that Mike had brought up on that side. Um, we have been working with Mike on the, on the design process for the past five months on this in regards to what are the things that he was concerned about that he's outlined tonight to you all tonight on that side. We've been working and Mark Lee, my engineer, our company on that side has been working diligently with Mike to make certain that the design that we've taken forth at this point in time, we've gone and looked at it from a three-dimensional standpoint, something that we didn't do with the previous design. We've actually kind of pretty much almost done a full-blown grading, grading study on the property that you see at a site plan level in order to get in a gauge and make certain that we're making Mike comfortable with the project if it were to go forward, that the next level at site plan, that the grading has already been taken care of. And that grading also brings into, it brings into it the form and fashion of how much stormwater our impervious services will make with this project and making certain that when we do this to project, if it would go forward and that design would go forward further on that side, how do, how much water are we, are we taking in? How, how long are we holding that water for so that whatever water we're creating on top of that, we're taking care of it so that it does not impact the situation that we have? have out there today. I think Mike did a good job of outlining the situation and what the character of this area is on that side, and this is kind of a map that Mark has done in regards to this, it might be a little hard to see up here, but I've got a paper copy over here to put up here in a moment when he comes up, but this map is more or less kind of reflective of all the sinkhole complexes that Mike talked about on that side. So Mark did a really good job of studying this to take a look at all the impacts of what's going on today, and then with our grading plan that we proposed at this point in time on the drawings and our detention we proposed on this, to make certain that this development, if approved, would not negatively affect the hydrologic system that's out there today. And that was the goal, the mission on that side was to take care of holding our water and figuring out when was the best time for our water to be released, so we're not adding more water to the system and making the flooding that is there today, and it's going to be there from here on in eternity, because it's a larger system that we can't take care of with anyone's dollars on that side, that we're taking care of this project to make certain we don't adversely affect the neighbors at large around our property at this time, so. What you see before you is Mike and Doug have kind of pinpointed on that side, we're looking at two different buildings on either side of the creek that comes underneath, that's everyone called a creek, there's really been a lot of, not much water that comes under there, but the drainage way that runs through the middle of the property, we've kind of subdivided the buildings into two pieces. If you remember, if you look at the back of your book, the plan that I was here with almost two years ago was 2.2 million square feet. The building that is on the southern side of that is 1.1 million square feet, so roughly half the size of the building I had before, and the building to the north is a 260,000-square-foot warehouse distribution building as well on that side. So in regards to what was brought forth two years ago was a behemoth compared to what we've designed today on this side, and it better accommodates the property at large on that side, and has greatly increased the amount of green space that we're retaining on the property, whether it be in buffers, open space around the buildings, or areas around the detention and other things like that, we've done a superior job of bringing back more green space than what was previously approved and previously looked at on the other one on that side. So a couple points I want to point out on this, as Doug talked about, our main entrance will be off of Sulphur Springs and come back on a 60-foot wide right away, comes back in the property. This will have two lots, each building will have its own lot of record, so you have a lot number one on the north side and lot number two on the south side. So we'll utilize that public roadway for the trucks and/or cars that are coming with the employees that will work here back down that road to get to these buildings on that side. Along the edges of this property, when we were here last time with the larger building, we were only promoting a 50-foot buffer, which is the largest buffer the county has, especially when it comes to a light industrial versus residential zoning classification. Hearing all the discussions that we had here between staff and the residents on that side, with the product that Stonemont has brought forth for me to design towards, I've been able to push that building up as far as I can to 840, and that gives us a greater amount of separation between the residents along Shacklet Road and that southwestern corner of the property on that side. So more or less what you have here before, we're proposing roughly a 50-foot man-made buffer, what we're proposing today is 150 foot, so three times the size of the maximum required buffer that the county has for light industrial property, we're proposing something that's three times as wide, and within that 150 feet of room, we are not disturbing that land. So all the existing forested areas that are out there, those will be saved and in perpetuity to provide an additional, already there, 30 to 50-foot tall today, we had it surveyed, went out and surveyed the trees that are on the property, get an average, so the diagrams I'm going to show you here in a moment, we average those out at about 40-foot high, so we can kind of go that way. So it's 150 foot, three times the length of the normal buffer with existing hard growth already on the ground out there to help promote visual buffer and also help with sound on that side, too. So that's kind of where the design went. TVA, like I talked about, TVA right now goes across the site like this on there, and working with TVA and their design engineers in regards to the rerouting of the paper easement at this point in time, what we're proposing is we're taking this easement right here and we're dragging it across, up between the two buildings, and back until it reaches the same point of contact there on the western side of the property. That easement has been designed specifically for both tower elements that TVA would be able to use in this easement. This is a 175-foot wide easement, it's one of the largest easements that TVA carries on paper at this point in time. This was originally supposed to come from the Hartsfield Nuclear Plant that never came to fruition, which is now the, you know, the old jail up there on that side. So this easement is still there, they don't want to give it up, because in case they need to use it for redundancy over time at some point in time, so this easement is designed to handle the, either the four-legged towers you see, or the single-masted tower with guy wires on it. So it's been designed to handle both types of footprints for those types of towers for TVA. So we're working, finishing up, trying to get through the next nine months of their review process, and then getting the legal documentation formalized and signed so that we can make those adjustments if this project would go forward on that side. So that's kind of where that's at. The drainage we talked about on that side, like Mike pointed out, is that there is a large culvert that comes under 840 on that side. It doesn't carry a lot of water, honestly, we've looked at it, we've watched it, we've studied it on that side, we've done the drainage basin studies on that side, too. So what we propose is more or less put that in an actual ditch, because right now it kind of meanders across the farm field, so we're going to put it in a channelized ditch that runs between the two properties. So that's pretty much the demising line between the two lots for each of the buildings on that side. So TVA will run parallel with that on that side of the ditch on that side. And then again, we talked about, I guess, our detentions, as Mike talked about, in regards to detention, each pond handles the impervious coverage for each of the buildings and each of those lots, so there's two ponds on either side of that drainage way, because you more or less have two drainage basins that you have to capture that water before it's released onto any neighboring properties. And again, this will be fully, you know, it's already partially designed, but if it would go forward and we continue to work down this road, it'd be fully designed as usual to meet all county and/or state standards in regards to stormwater management and water quality on that side as well. Again, just to kind of point out, the buffering's on this side, you know, we talked about the green area that you see here, it looks like green on the screen here, that's the 150-foot preservation buffer along those properties to the southwest. The other properties over here along this gold side there, there's existing vegetation outside the detention ponds, along those properties back here and up here until we get to the entrance on that side, that would be the perpetual 50-foot typical type 3 buffer, but it's actually, we will be using it as a preservation buffer, and locations within those areas that don't have existing vegetation, they will be vegetated with six-foot tall to start, evergreen trees in the holes and gaps and stuff on that side, so that's what we'll be doing on that side. The last part to all this is going to be the entrance at Sulphur Springs. So we've got a very narrow neck, as Mike talked about, in regards to the right-of-TVA access, in regards to the property on that side, there is a TVA line that comes to a point, we get to a spot right there, and that's the last part of where TVA's access, I've worked with the...
T-Dot.
T-Dot, sorry, T-Dots, I was busy worrying about TVA. T-Dot, we've been working with Stanley at TVA and T-Dot to verify where that corner was, and that's where we've located that corner, so our design works within inside those means of our throat that we have to the property that we're not actually in T-Dot's rights of access to that ramp on that side. So we've worked well within our means on that side to get that 60 foot. So we've got about 78 to 80 foot of space between that monument and the property owner on the west on that side. So in that area, because it is so narrow, we don't have the room to do a true type 3 buffer on that side. So talking through with Stonemont and, you know, with Mike and those guys trying to come up some solutions, what we're proposing on that is along that western boundary of that right-of-way, proposing a 12-foot tall masonry sound wall along the western side, the neighbor side of that sound wall, putting up evergreen trees along that for beautification purposes and also to enhance the character of that. And then internally, we'll be looking at that as part of that wall, we'll have landscape along the base of that, and then potentially using that wall as also our signage on that side. So we were kind of getting the signage incorporated into that wall, so we've got that on that side. So that's kind of the three different treatment elements we're doing in regards to buffering What we've shown here in the next three slides are three cross-sections, more or less, to kind of show what we're looking at in relationship to distances from adjacent properties on the southwest edge or the southern edge along Shacklet, to kind of give you an idea about the distances we've increased in regards to what we had last time versus this time. Like I talked about, last time we came through with only 50 foot, at a minimum we're looking at 150 foot on that side, but these lines here will kind of give you a representation of what we have in regards to distances. This line right here is this cross-section across here. So from this house back to the building itself, you have between the house and the building, you have 770 feet of separation between the building and the house. So that's some of the increased amount of distances we provided with this different, with Stonemont's product that they're bringing forth on the property. And with that, you're looking at from the property line to our nearest roadway element, which is the circular loop around the outside of the property line on that, you have 445 feet of separation between the property line and where our circular loop road will be on that side. So that area in there, even though we're at 150 foot of separation with our buffer on that side, there's additional land in there that we're planning on proposing to keep, those trees in regards to keeping that more visual and/or sound distance on that side as well. On this one here, there's this line right here going across to the corner of the building on that side, so you can see the distance that we have from the property here on that side and the roadway at Shacklet. Back to the building, you're at 624 feet, so technically a little more than two football fields' distance between the homes and the building on that side. And again, getting back into it with another about 245 feet of existing forest to be preserved in order to separate the two uses on that side. Probably going to jump four slides. And the last section line here is crossed out here in that bottom of Shacklet on that side, coming back to the building, again, from the actual house across the street to the building itself, we're at 734 foot, and you're looking at about 360-some feet of separation between the roadway and stuff, we're keeping the trees on that side, back to the road on that. Next, I want to talk about the traffic impact study. Peter's here, he'll be coming up if you have any questions specifically about the report, but I'm going to kind of give you an overview of what the traffic impact study recommendations were on this. There was three recommendations that the traffic study posed on this in regards to our development on existing infrastructure around the project on that side. So we've got three points that we're talking about tonight. One point will be this ramp, this laneage here in regards to the dedicated left-hand turn going on the northbound ramp to the interstate. The other one will be the improvements to the, coming up to our intersection here that we'll be creating with Hickory Lane, and then three is also the laneage type and function of the outboard lane coming off of our street getting back to Sulphur Springs in regards to that, so I'm going to go through those real quick. First is that, right now, there currently is in this dedicated left-hand turn lane to the ramp to get on 840, about 110 foot of stacking depth. The traffic study requested that that be extended to 250 foot, so what you see now on the drawing itself is that that queuing lane used to stop about here, we're pushing it all the way back to almost the underpass of the roadway there for additional depths, we've got 250 feet of stacking depth for cars and/or trucks or whatever may be using Sulphur Springs to get on the interchange at that location on that side. Next is the intersection that we're creating with Hickory Lane for our roadway to go back to the development on that side. So the other improvement was to provide 175 feet of stacking lane for left-hand turns in the development on that side. So working with T-Dot, we've worked up the design to incorporate taking a portion of that existing concrete raised median out in order to provide for that queuing depth for the left-hand turn into the property on that side. And then subsequently, the design coming up here on the exit, so we'll be creating more or less a four-way intersection, one is a three-way intersection now, and you can see all the different turning movements that we created. So the monument that we have for T-Dot stops right there, that's where their monument is, and that's where their right-of-access stops, based on the drawings that we pulled from T-Dot's records on that side. So with this, this will be that 175-foot stacking depth that we have for our dedicated left-hand turn lane into the property, this will be three lanes all the way back to the cul-de-sac. What we're providing here is that the outgoing lane out of this, and part of the discussion we had, the last time we've gone through this and going through this again, is trying to figure out a way to make certain that trucks, delivery trucks, transportation trucks between the facilities or internationally or nationally on that side, will be dedicated to making themselves go to the right to go back to the interchange instead of going left. So what the design of this was, is incorporate that this lane actually is the travel lane, is actually stays a travel lane and actually turns into the dedicated left-hand lane to send traffic back to Sulphur Springs to go back to the interchange on that side to get the truck traffic to more or less bend automatically going back to there. Yes, technology's out there, GPS will tell somebody what to do, but I think in regards to Stonemont and their group on that side, because they are the landlords, they do have opportunities to write into their lease agreements with their tenants on that side, agreements for penalizations in regards to trucks that are working for them, that if they happen to go left in Sulphur Springs and get caught going left or ticketed going left, that the company would be penalized from a landlord's standpoint. So that's one of the things that they're going to work into their lease agreements with whoever the tenants are going to be for that space on that side. So then, more or less, by doing what we're doing in regards to that lane being the straight lane turning into the left-hand lane, you'd actually have to jog to get in the middle lane to make a left-hand turn to go down Sulphur Springs. So that's kind of a design element to try to promote truck traffic to head back to the interchange and not make a left-hand turn, because you'd have to actually swerve out of the lane you're in to get in that lane to turn left on that side. And then, of course, we'd also include the continual movements through the intersection on that side. This is just a couple 3D renderings we worked up in regards to what the intersection would look like on that side. As you can see, there's our 12-foot tall sound wall with our landscaping on the inside, and you can see the evergreen trees on the backside. This would be the dedicated left-hand turn lane moving, heading back to interchange, this would be a truck here turning left to turn into the entrance on that side to head back to one of the buildings on that side, and then you have traffic moving through on Sulphur Springs and that. And this next view here is just more of an aerial view looking south, looking back into the site, going back into that in regards to the sound wall, the vegetation, and the turning movers that we have going with the new intersection that we're proposing on We've committed to, from the get-go, when I brought this project through three years ago, was trying to do light industrial zoning straight up on this, and what you all agreed was not the best choice, and I asked for a PUD, which then we brought back to plan in 2020. On that side, we've made that commitment since day one that we would not put traffic on to Shacklet Road, and we're honoring that commitment today in regards to this project as well. So all traffic that comes and goes from this project would be going back to Sulphur Springs, only nothing to Shacklet. We're actually working with the county right now in regards to the little stub street that's been here forever, it's called Frontage Road F, working with County, Greg Brooks and the county to more or less abandon that section of that right-of-way that's no longer necessary, and then incorporate that back into our property on that side to provide for that buffer on that side, so there's no actual chances for vehicles or anything using that section on that side. So that's the commitment we made three years ago, this commitment the previous client made, and this commitment that Stonemont's making today, that there's going to be no traffic added to Shacklet Road. Just want to kind of go through some... Give you some perspective, these are in your books as well in regards to the actual architecture of the buildings themselves. As you can see, these are Class A warehouse distribution facilities that Stonemont does, the architects have done a real good job in presenting a very nice product for the property on that side. As you can see, this would be one of the main entrances, that would be how's like the entrances for employees to get in, to work in the docks and the storage areas on the backside, also office areas on that side, so this is kind of the main entrance to the building on that side. And again, another view, these are just different perspectives about how the building would look. This is kind of looking at the corner of one of the buildings in regards to the bays on the backside, as you can see on this, doesn't like that one, but these are the bays, so you have the office space here, a wall, and then you have your truck docks along the walls on that side. The larger, the 1.1 million square foot building has bays on both sides, that'd be the east and west, but the smaller 260,000 square foot building only has bays facing 840 on that side, so that's the difference, because of the size and scale of the buildings, the 1.1 needs to have the bays on both sides, the 260 only needs it on one side. And these are just some elevation perspectives in regards to this, this would be primarily tilted-up concrete walls with painting and stuff like that and dry-fit, it'll have some architectural aluminum on it, spender glass and windows and other stuff like that as part of the motif for the actual architecture. And then at the back of your book, you can see some comparison charts that we put in the book on that side to kind of talk about the comparisons between the zoning that you see today in regards to what is the RM zoning that we're asking to be changed over to the PUD on that side. So if you look at it from the standpoint of RM, and you look at the right-hand side of the column, you'll see the differences on that side. So when you look at in regards to setbacks in regards to structures and stuff, when you look at 840, you're required to have 40 foot with the RM, we're actually at 50, but the big numbers really come in when you look at Shacklet, you're required to have a 40-foot setback on that, and then we're pushing that to a minimum 150 foot, so you're looking at about 110-foot additional room that we're provising with this plan in regards to expanding upon the buffering, those setbacks that are part of that. And then also, you look at lock cover... And then also you look at lock coverage, 45, you know, 50% lock coverage in regards to the RM. We're looking at 45% coverage. So that's just kind of comparison to the RM, what's if the property stayed RM today. But if you look at the chart next to this, this is more of a comparison, equal comparison, apples to apples kind of comparison in regards to light industrial zoning classifications in regards to the setbacks and everything else like that. What you're looking at, one of the major things that I think is beneficial to look at on this is that the fact that the floor area ratio for a light industrial is 1.0 and what we're proposing with this property is 0.25. So we're about 0.75 less than the floor area ratio that a light industrial zoning would allow for on the property itself, let alone looking at the, again, the larger increases in side setbacks, rear setbacks and stuff that we're talking about, you know, upping those between 100 and 130 foot depending on what side of the property we're looking at on that. So that's just kind of some comparisons that we're wanting to make certain we're all aware of. I appreciate your time and consideration on that. I think Mark is gonna come up real quick to kind of talk a little bit about what we had in regards to the stormwater on that side that Mike brought out on that side and talk a little bit about his study and talk about what we're doing with the grading plan to kind of get an idea to make certain that what we're proposing is not gonna be detrimental to the stormwater system that's out there today.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Mark Lee and with Site Engineering Consultants. As Rob mentioned, I looked at the entire watershed that contributes to a problem that actually has, that's existing and can't be solved on Sulphur Springs Road near Buckeye Valley Road and that area. It's a 3,100 acre watershed, which is about 4.8 square miles at our property line and it continues to grow as it goes on down through the watershed towards the river. That has been die-traced by Albert Ogden and I created a watershed map and placed those die traces on there and just to see where, how it goes, may go through this property. And there are numerous sinkholes in this watershed. And on my watershed map, I just created large thick lines on the really large sinkholes. I didn't denote all of them, but there are a lot of sinkholes in this watershed. And there are no streams in this watershed except for underground. And so that water travels for several miles to get to the point that it releases back into the Stones River. So we looked at ways that we could not make things worse. We can't solve the problem. I like to solve problems as an engineer, but that's one that Mother Nature put there in our way and it's there for good. I suppose you could raise roads up, but you're still gonna have flooding in that area. I noticed that there are several houses, I guess it would be Walnut Lane and Kimberly Drive that are in the 100-year floodplain. While looking at the watershed, I did, it did cross my mind that it might be possible to get some of those houses out of the floodplain. And I did see some ways that could happen. I don't know who would be willing to step to the plate to make that happen, but it may be possible that county residents could get out of the floodplain. It would be, it would involve FEMA and the local government. So when I looked at grading this site, my goal was to drain it down to where we could create large detention areas. And as Rob mentioned, the site is somewhat severed by a natural drainage way. It's not a lot of water that goes through there, but nonetheless, we did not want to capture that water and do anything with it. We just wanted to leave it alone. So we proposed large detention areas on each side of that drainage way at the bottom of our site, which would be to the west. Those detention ponds are extremely large. Combined, they are about 15 acres in surface area. And when I routed a storm through the northernmost pond, I just checked the 100-year after I put some, an outlet structure in just to see if it was large enough. And we like detention ponds to be about four or five feet deep so we can have vertical storage rather than it spread out and allow outlet structure and culverts to go out so high enough that you could do that with a culvert. When I did this one and I routed the storm through there, the 100-year storm, I cut off the flow that was normally about 100 cubic feet per second down to 20 cubic feet per second and it only made the pond less than two feet deep water. And I thought, wow, we could, you know, shrink the outlet structure, make the water go up higher in the pond, release it over a lot longer period of time at a much smaller rate. And like I said, it's about 20 cubic feet, or about 20 cubic feet per second on that one pond where it was about 100 cubic feet per second. That's a pretty significant drop. And both ponds are that way, both areas. And not only that, if we wanted to, we could even make them larger. Normally, we try to make detention ponds as small as they can, smallest footprint to make more property developable. But in this case, we don't want to do that. We want to detain as long as we can and release it over a long period of time. As I mentioned to Mr. Hughes, the problem at Sulphur Springs Road where it floods and Buckeye Valley Road, Shacklet Road is not created by surface water from this area. It's created from this huge watershed and it travels underground several miles and starts, and it comes up out of the detention, out of the sinkholes. That's nothing you could stop, nothing you want to stop. But what we don't want to do is make that worse. We don't want to do that. But we have an exceeding amount of area, I hate to say that in the ears of the developer, but we can, we can really slow this water down tremendously and store it over a longer period of time, release at a much smaller rate of runoff than what currently happens. I don't know if you're interested in looking at the map that I created. Put a lot of time into it. There's a lot of watersheds in that big, huge watershed. And each, the reason I created smaller watersheds is to see where the sinkholes were. There's a lot of sinkholes and I, I mean, I didn't go down to the throat of the sinkhole. I went to the huge broad area, the enclosed contour, the last upper enclosed contour and looked at that. I used Tennessee, the state of Tennessee has flown the entire state with LiDAR and they make that available. And it took several panels and it's a very large file, but I created a one-foot contour map. And if you looked at my exhibit, you'd have to look at it with a good sharp eye, you would see that there's contours in there. But I used the state of Tennessee LiDAR to create that. It's very reliable data. And just today, when I was looking at a site, we already had surveyed it and created one-foot contours and I used the LiDAR, I brought in the LiDAR to get a much larger look at it, just like this site. And the contours overlapped really, I mean, right on top of each other. So it's really good data from state of Tennessee. And so the map that I've created is very detailed. It would get difficult to follow. I've shaded back the contours so they're not so prominent, but there's a lot of information on there. It shows the watershed or the river, the Stones River. It shows the large karst areas. Shows the watershed lines for those karst areas. It shows the die traces that Albert Ogden did. It shows the 100-year and 500-year floodplains and flow directions for where I was trying to figure out just where the watershed limits were for each sinkhole. Lot of information on there. You all might find it interesting, I do as an engineer. But we've looked at this and the only thing additional that I could think of that we could do and we plan on doing, I've talked to Mr. Brooks about this. When it rains heavily, that road floods. And so I talked to a few people out in that area to find out how long it took for that water to rise up and how long it took to go down. I got a lot of different answers. And so when I talked to Mr. Brooks, he said, you know, we're not the first ones on the scene, our sheriff's office usually is, and they put signs up and just to keep people from going through there. People still go through there, but they regret it. But so then what we're planning on doing is talking to the sheriff's department and find out the reaction time for that karst system. See how long it takes for the water to come up and how long it takes for it to go back down. And we would like to time our storm release to take advantage of that if we can. So I mean, there's a lot, lot to think about there. It's a, it's a pretty complex situation and I know the people out there are frustrated every time it rains heavy because they can't go the direction they want to go and have to find alternate routes. Do you all have any questions for me? I'll be glad to answer any. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sean Henry's gonna come up real quick to do some closing remarks, but I'll stay up here in case you all have some questions for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Sean Henry. I'm a former city planner like Mr. Demasi here, but I'm presently a land use attorney and I'm here on behalf of Stonemont to address you. I really just want to make two points. One regarding the PUD zoning that you're asked to approve here this evening and then the comprehensive plan that was adopted about 10 years ago by this commission. I think if you could pull up the site plan, please. The most, if you pull up the site plan, really the most striking feature about this site is that it has almost a mile of road frontage on Interstate 840 and obviously right there at the interchange, almost a mile of interstate frontage. It's a very unique situation and from an economic development standpoint, it's a very desirable situation, obviously, where one of your local businesses wouldn't be, would not be behind this request as they are. The benefit here of using the PUD zoning is that it can, it can, and we think this design does the trick, it can effectively transition from the interstate across this piece of property toward the residential properties on the border of it. What you heard a moment ago is that we've got 157 acres here, but only 25% of that acreage is being occupied by two buildings, 25%. The setbacks have been increased, the open space buffers have been increased. What you're looking at is a context-sensitive design to protect those adjacent properties and it doesn't really matter who uses those buildings. There's gonna be questions put in front of you that we don't, you know, the citizens and neighbors don't know who's gonna be in there. What's important is that this design gets approved in a manner that protects those adjacent properties and we would submit that that's exactly what you're looking at. The concerns regarding traffic and stormwater control, those are engineering exercises. You've just heard very competent commentary and analysis on stormwater and those features. But further detailed analysis will follow the approval of the zoning district. As the development progresses forward, after zoning is approved, final construction drawings, final design, all of those finer details will come later. And of course, no permission to build is granted until that, until competent engineering and analysis and those solutions are fully vetted by your professional staff. Secondly, the comprehensive plan. I want just a couple of quotes from your comprehensive plan. Quote, "Economic development objectives use design standards to promote attractive, functional and sustainable development. Promoting high-quality development is an economic development strategy for attracting top-quality employers to Rutherford County." And as you all know, there's three legs of the economic stool. You want to attract businesses, you want to keep businesses, retain those businesses and you want to help them expand. What this zoning does is it does two of those three. It's retaining an existing business in your county and this zoning will allow that business to expand its warehouse and distribution operations onto this site. This is not a manufacturing site. We shouldn't let the word industrial confuse people to think that this might be some sort of manufacturing facility. It's not. It's warehouse and distribution along almost a mile of frontage on the interstate. And importantly, the design standards that are incorporated into this PUD give Rutherford County a competitive edge and that's exactly what your comprehensive plan talks about, garnering and promoting a competitive edge. There's a lot of competition in middle Tennessee, as you well know, for this kind of, this kind of zoning, this kind of use, and here it is in front of you. So I will conclude by simply saying that because this zone change implements and supports your comprehensive plan, because it allows an existing business to remain where it is and also to expand its warehouse and distribution operations onto this location, we ask that you recommend approval to the county board commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Like I said, I'm here currently, if you guys have any questions for me or the design team on that side, I know you guys gotta take it's a public hearing at that point in time, but I'm here for any questions the commission may have in regards to the presentation.
I'd like to ask a question if I'm not stepping on something. Are there sinkholes on this property?
There are sinkholes on this property. We had a HD, we did have our HD study done on this from this side on the property. There are nine sinkholes that were noted on the HD report on that side. So yes, there are sinkholes on this property.
And water boils out of them?
Correct, yes, on that side, yes. Just like, just like Mark said and Mike said, the system may come back up.
Buildings gonna be put on top of those sinkholes or proposed to put on top of those sinkholes?
The sinkholes that we have on the property right now are to the west, to the south and one and two to the north on the north end by Sulphur Springs on that side. The location where the buildings are at, there's no sinkholes in those locations. So we're kind of fortunate in regards to where the sinkholes were found on the site.
So you do not plan on altering the sinkholes at this time?
Correct.
And with the pond storage capacity, you'll be able to capture every bit of the impervious of the building, the parking lots. I know the wooded buffer will do its natural thing and do what it's gonna do, but you intend to catch every bit of that that's impervious.
Correct, yes. So all the impervious, the 1.1 million square feet of the roof, the 260,000 square feet plus, all the parking, all the truck storage, the roads themselves, all that water will be captured and funneled through pipes or ditches back to those two ponds. So anything that we're creating that doesn't allow water to naturally percolate, as by design standards from the state, will be occupying all that water in those ponds that Mark was just talking about in regards to, you know, 13 acres of storage area that we've got proposed at this time, which, you know, as we go through the process, that could be changed and made larger or smaller, but still be required to handle holding back that quantity of water that we create.
With that, you're talking about your ponds. Will they, I know as part of your property also sits in the 100-year floodplain, will it capture that or is it, are they gonna be functional to capture that 100-year floodplain water?
Mark? I'll let Mark answer that real quick since he's a design engineer on it.
I believe that was you, Mr. Reed, that asked that question, is that right? Okay, yes. There is the 100-year floodplain that comes up into the property. We will have ponds that will be in the floodplain. We can also excavate out any volume that we might, you know, for offset in it, but there shouldn't be any issues. Actually, the... Actually, the study that the Corps of Engineers does for, or FEMA does for the rivers, they use Hecras software, and the version that they use now does not consider storage. So it's a one-dimensional model, and it just takes the water surface elevation up and then back down. It doesn't consider volume, so we wouldn't be impacting anything that they have in their current model.
Before you leave, Mark, I was just looking at that where, exactly where it shows the 100-year floodplain, it takes in a corner of one of the warehouses, I think the big warehouse is where it takes in the corner, but it also takes in the drive, the main entrance drive as it comes in, and you only have one way in, one way out. So anything on that side would have to cross over into a parking lot on the smaller warehouse to get out of there if that did flood and back. And that's just one reason why I was asking that, because, you know, I always look at something, when you've got one way in, one way out, I guess I'm getting old. I always look for a second exit to get out of something.
Well, I appreciate your attention to detail. I looked at that as well when I was grading the site, and so what my intention was is to keep the road above the floodplain and the sites above the floodplain. Now, the larger building, I believe that elevation is 531?
539.
What is it? 539? Somewhere right there. So I, my goal was to keep the building and the parking and everything above the floodplain, so that would not be an issue with the site.
Sure.
All right. Something to add to that, excuse me. FEMA has re-studied this area, and they are making modifications to the floodplain in this area, if it'll work. The gremlins are working. The blue area is an area that they're showing a reduction in the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain. The yellow is an area that they're showing a reduction in the 500-year floodplain. So some of this property will still be in the flood zone, but it's, they're modifying a little bit in this area. Any fill in the flood zone, whether it's the current or the future, we have to have a compensating cut so we don't lose that volume of storage. And the stormwater ponds will have to function as the receiving streams are at flood stage. So they've got to function as, you know, the receiving streams are full.
Yeah, I think that's what Mark was kind of alluding to in regards to trying to figure out what our timing was in relationship to the vast amount of volume that we'll have, we'll be able to hold back our water to get a gauge as to when's the most appropriate time to release our water, so we're not detrimentally affecting the system at large around us on that side.
Other questions for the applicant at this time? You guys stay close.
Sean, thank you.
Before we conduct a public hearing, this commissioner and this individual needs a five-minute break, so we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and conduct the public hearing, okay? Five-minute break. For the public hearing, let me make a couple of suggestions. Instead of coming up one at a time and taking time to list everybody's name, if one would come up, and then one would follow them up and be standing in line, so after one leaves, another one come up. I'd like to stack it double, if y'all understand what I'm trying to say. And our process is three minutes. You have three minutes to make your comments, unless you're representing a group of people, and I'll probably give you as much time as you need, but you'll need to tell me that you're representing a group and who that group is, and are they present tonight. So as we get into the public hearing, hold your comments to three minutes. And once again, if you're representing a group, I'll probably give you as much time as you need within reason, okay? All right, welcome back. At this time, we'll conduct our public hearing for item number REZ22-014, Dustin Estes for SFG Murfreesboro. Once again, the public hearing is open, so anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. If you would give your name and address.
My name is Thomas Clark. My property butts up on the, my east border and my north border, two sides backs up to this property along Shacklet Road. My main concern that I want to speak on, and by the way, I'm sorry, Mr. Phillips.
I speak for the Sulfur Springs opposed. I have a thing, so.
Very good.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Kind of nervous, so.
But we've been looking for these maps, but our biggest, our biggest fear is flooding along with the traffic, but I want to speak mainly just about the flooding. These maps are great. This is what we've been looking for. If I'm not mistaken, the blue are sinkholes, am I right? Is that what those are? This is great. This sinkhole right here along Sulfur Springs, this is right behind Almost Smoking Ed's, the Methodist Church. And as you can tell, this thing fills up like, like, I hope Danny Tomlin's here, he can speak, he was raised. This sinkhole right here, that's the big one. That's the one that floods Sulfur Springs while we have to shut our roads down. All this water, and Rob, who presented for SEC, I wanted to point out what he said. There's not a lot of water above ground going on this property. I'm going to show some pictures on my slideshow, and I want to make sure that we focus on how much water is coming and it goes, and when you see the pictures of all the sinkholes that run, this is Shacklet, my property's right about here, the sinkholes want to run. Now, you can tell by the river, you would think that everything is going to go to the river. I'm going to show you pictures of how this water does not act natural. It all is underneath the ground, and right here where they're proposing the main entrance is a bunch of sinkholes, along with a lot of sinkholes on this side, and right here along the Walnut and Kimberly Drive is also a lot of majority of the sinkholes. And Doug, can you pull my slideshow? All right, oop, too fast. Oh, there we go. So this is the main, where we just talked about our main flooding, or causes, which makes the news all the time. Right there is the stop sign, this is Shacklet Road. On the other side, you can't even see the shack, the stop sign coming off Buckeye. Now, I wish I could have panned this out, most of mine were videos, and I had to do a lot of screenshots in order to get these pictures to be able to upload. This is massive river, the water you haven't seen. This water is coming from underneath this proposed land. It is coming from that map I just showed you from the sinkholes, and now that we finally know where this water's coming from, we've been searching for these karst maps forever. This water is being affected underneath. And as we go through here, this is the river itself. I wanted to show this part of the river because all this flooding does not come from the river. The flooding that we have in Leanna, East Fork, Northwest Fork, Stones River, does not have any influence with this water. All of this water is underground watershed that's coming. That's the river, this is Shacklet Road right here, none of that water is coming upon Shacklet This is going from Mr. Jay Bunt, the neighbor across the street from me. This is the water showing, this water starts to come up, it goes over and feeds across to the adjacent. Back there behind this red bud, back there, right there, that is Stones River that I just showed you the picture previous of. If I could run this video, the water, oop, I hit the wrong button again, I apologize, I am so sorry. This water is flowing from Jay Bunt's. It comes across the river going in to Mr. Hayes's field next to my neighbor, the Del This is that field. That massive water is flowing towards Kimberly Walnut Lane, heading that way. This is my neighbor, Del Campo. I just want to show where this water right here is flowing. These are numerous sinkholes that I'll have pictures of here in a second. This is my house that's adjacent, or right next to the property. That is our sinkhole. This water, even though comes out, goes away from, Stones River's across the street from me, goes across through these chambers, and is heading towards Walnut, Kimberly, Jonesboro Neighborhood. This is across, this is on the other side of 840, this is the east side of 840. This is important to note, the water in Mr. Gander's field out here, this is where, at one time in 2010, Shacklet Road was shut off on both sides. At both sides during 2010, unless you had a four-wheel-drive truck, you could not leave Shacklet Road. And this is the water that gets in that field, it will come across right here at the stop sign and go across, and it'll just sit there. Where does it go? It sits there until it can go underground. Back the other way is that sinkhole that, behind the Methodist Church, all this water is waiting to travel to these sinkholes throughout our properties. This is behind, this is like going on, behind Kimberly, right on Shacklet Road, and of course, the good old famous, like you said, trucks will do what they have to. They blocked that for a long time when that truck tried to think it was going to go through here. Now, some of the sinkholes, this is at the corner of Evans and Walnut. This sinkhole opened up when 840 came in. Anytime there's construction, mass, we're seeing our changes. I've had a new sinkhole open up on my property, on the, me and the Del Campos property line. As more and more water, the water table's rising, we're seeing crazy changes with this, but right here is a sinkhole right on the side of the road. Kids ride bikes all up and down this road. This is just another view of that sinkhole. This is at the dead end of Walnut. That is a massive sinkhole that that water comes out of, that is feeding from that lines that we showed earlier on that karst map. This is my sinkhole, my driveway, when I was talking about, this just opened up over the last year with this sinkhole. That one right here, Mr. Mark, the engineer, made a perfect example, stole my line. One of the unique things about Leanna community is we don't have creeks. Our water's underneath. This is an exposed on the Del Campo, it's about three feet deep, it runs 24/7, 365. It will not dry out. It is an underground watershed that runs across my front yard into the Del Campos out towards that way. These are all those running to that field where the haze is, that water that dumped across the Shacklet Road to these massive sinkholes. I spent about three hours walking the Del Campos land, and I was able to come across 15 sinkholes that I was able to see, and I'm not a geotech, geotech, and we was able to find these sinkholes just walking around. This is the sinkholes that are on Mr. Hayes' property. All of this water that I was saying is coming this way. Here's the property, this is Shacklet Road, this is me. This watershed that we have highlighted is going this way. Our concern is this, it's not the water that is being on top that they can handle. We understand that, they can do amazing things with engineering and how they can handle the water on top. When they start blasting, these are huge retention ponds. They're putting these retention ponds right on top of the sinkholes. They said they weren't going to build the buildings on the sinkhole, but they're going to put all the retention ponds. When we start changing the traffic, they're going to have to fix the sinkholes to get the traffic. There's a sinkhole, as soon as it's got the post-it sign that pulls in that they want all this traffic to go, look, that is a sinkhole. They're going to have to cap that sinkhole in order to put the traffic in and out. When they start capping, and they start moving the dirt, when they start blasting, digging in these retention ponds, my thought is this, all that water I showed you coming down Sulfur Springs, all that water that's coming underneath, what happens? If we cut off a tribute, if we cut something out right there, that flow, and next thing you know, instead of it being able to go down Sulfur Springs, what if it shoves it down Shacklet Road and takes it the way I just showed you those sinkholes are going? That's what we have concerned about. That is why we are requesting that a karst report, that a hydro report, a thorough, like, it's not the above ground, I can't reiterate that as much as I stand up here. The sinkholes scare us. They're opening, they're changing. We have a lot of people in our community that can speak on and on about how the water comes out of the ground, and it's baffled me. It is, it's like you can get into hydro so easy because it's fascinating to watch how this stuff works. And I learned my lesson about sinkholes. I filled my in, and Mother Nature told me real quick how the dummy I am, and corrected my mistake by throwing everything I threw in it back out down my driveway. So this, once again, was a map that we pulled off a floodplain that shows these real dark areas. This is Walnut right here, these are some of the lands up here on Sulfers, this is right here with the Del Campos and me. We're already flood, we're already major flood, we're listed on here as extreme flood already. Anything we do to this property is going to negatively impact this area right here. And my fear is, what happens if we cause a whole new area? Because Mother Nature is going to take all that water somewhere. It's going to. All that concrete, all the blasting, every time it's disturbed, Mr. Freeman pointed out in our neighborhood meeting that the development that's going on on Broad Street, kind of adjacent to us, that he has seen the effects, he owns a lot of property in this community, and he has seen the effects from just that. And we've seen the effects with all the growth that's going on in Rutherford County, we see it, we feel it, we see it in the water. Oh, boy, I went crazy again. So this last point, and I just want to show, there was a group last fall, and it never got to the planning, okay? It was turned down, it never even got to this table, but we met with them for months. Rusty Russ with All-Star Sales Construction and Development, and Wendell Moore, who was with government relations out of Don Sunquist's office or something. He met with us several times at our home, he met with the Whites, he met with the Travis's, they did thorough, they did drone footage, they spent a lot of money out there, and they had a developer from Chicago that was going to come in. We met with them, first neighborhood meeting, we voiced our concerns, they actually somewhat listened, came back, and in the process of coming back with the second one on August 31st, 2021, and by the way, the pictures I'd showed y'all earlier about that water was not 2010, that was March 28th, 2021. That was not the big flood, that's just normal flooding for us. So don't think that that was the 2010 big stuff, that was just a typical flood. These next pictures, now, they were all videos, so I had to take screenshots on them, so please bear with me, but on August 31st, 2021, we had all of this started to happen. Now, that was two and a half inches of rain in 12 hours, and that much water is what impacted us, and it started coming out of the ground. Rusty, Russ, I called him to tell him what was going on, he came out there immediately, saw it, couldn't believe it. saw it, couldn't believe the water that we got in this area. We then, with his engineering firm that was doing their development out of Chicago, I forwarded them those videos. They had a whole different design. They decided, instead of these retention ponds that were about the size of these retention ponds, they were also going to purchase land on the other side of 840 to put a retention pond there. And then they were also came up with this idea that they were going to bury a 12-inch pipe down Walnut Lane with easement on other neighbors to get to the river to be able to pump the water off, which was crazy, but thanks for the next, when they proposed that to us at the next neighborhood meeting, Mr. DeBose said, sorry, talk to the highway. That ain't going to happen. We're not giving you a ride away. Immediately, you could hear the wind go out of their cell. Next thing you know, they never even submitted it. They knew then with the pictures and the data that we showed them and the seeing the actual water, that it was more than their engineers could accommodate for. So, what I ask is, please. I don't know how to, I don't know how to say it anymore then. There's something underneath the ground of Leanna and it scares us out there. We don't want anything safely. We don't want sinkholes opening up. We don't want to be on the news where a house falls into a sinkhole or that the water opens up a new sinkhole and floods out the entire Shacklet Road because we don't really know what's going on. Thank y'all for your time. Thank you, Doug.
My name is Robert Mooneyham. I live in a Miles Farm subdivision. I have for 29 years. I've seen any kind of flooding around there that you want to see. Before 840, we had to drive 11 miles around to get out. I, for one, am not concerned about the flooding. Yes, it floods. Water runs downhill. There are sinkholes everywhere. You don't want nobody blasting. Then why do you let a man down the street bust up rock and dynamite and haul it off in a duck truck? Double standards. I don't see where traffic affects anybody in my subdivision. I would welcome a light industrial park because Leanna, what left of it, two churches, a dollar store, is growing. Traffic will not be a problem from this. You're coming out on Sulfur Springs. You're pretty much forced to take a right, get on the interstate, get off the interstate, go to the thing. There's no reason nobody should go to the three-way stop. Not at all. Not in a tractor trailer. Although I almost got run over by one running the stop sign on the dog leg at the three-way stop today. I think signs can be put up by the county, no tractor trailers. And if you cross it, were we getting the tickets paid and then we're some healthy tickets? I don't think that will be an issue. You've got everybody complaining, traffic, 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 but nobody says nothing about Cherry Lane Extension. Well, guess what? The industrial parks in front of my yard are subdivision. Cherry Lane goes right beside my house. So, I get it all. I welcome it because I do not want to see another subdivision and I do not want to see apartment complex. And that's what will go there eventually. The Cherry Lane expansion will be mirrored after Veterans Parkway. And if anybody knows what that looks like, then you know what kind of apartments and all the building that we are fixing to have. And I welcome a new business. And it's like I said, flooding has always been an issue. My backyard is in a hundred-year floodplain. The river is less than a mile behind my house. And I'm okay with it. If God wants to flood us, he will flood us. But when you want to talk about somebody dynamiting up here, it's going to cause something. But it's okay for somebody to dynamite down here. Y'all be the judge. But I welcome the industrial park. I don't want to see a subdivision and I sure don't want to see apartments and have a couple of thousand people stuck. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and the rest of the commission, I'm Merv Whittenburg. I live at 5047 Sulfur Springs Road. And I've lived there for 15 years now. I built a home out there on a piece of property that didn't have a home ever on that area. And when we built that home, I knew I was in a floodplain. But I built my house up and I also had a survey done of my property. And that survey revealed that I didn't really have to raise my house up, that I was out of the floodplain before I started to build it. I had that engineer who was, at that time, it was Little John Engineering in Nashville. I worked with them on a regular basis. So, I had them come and do that for me. I had them send a letter to FEMA. I had them send a letter to Washington. I had them send a letter to everybody that they knew that had anything to do with that. And I heard Mark say a little while ago that there's a possibility of getting some of these homes out of the floodplain. Well, I won't see that day. I don't think that day will ever happen. Mark, I trust you and what you do. But that's a sales pitch because they denied my letter twice. They denied me certifying it twice. They denied me paying $1,500 each time to have that survey done. They denied it, okay? Now, I'm happy where I'm at and I'm okay with paying my floodplain insurance every year. I just pay it and go right on. But when it comes to developing that piece of property that we're talking about right now, there's no sense in me beating a dead horse about it, but you're going to run lines underground to go to your retention ponds. Well, you're going to find more sinkholes when you start running those lines to go to those retention ponds and there's nobody taking that into consideration. Or if you did, you don't want to talk about it. The other thing is, I'd like to know, Mark, when, when was the last, when they did the dye test, when was that last dye test done? If somebody can tell me that. I think it's about 20 years ago if you go back and check. I think that's about the last time it was done. So, I'm going to tell you right now, there's been at least, I know at least 15 sinkholes that have opened up out there in the last two years. I know that Sulfur Springs Road has flooded at least one major time every year since 2010. Okay? It's going to continue to do that. We all know it is. Until that road is widened, they will take that into consideration and they will take care of that issue, I think. But the county don't want to widen that right now. It's too expensive to widen that right now. It's been on the books for 15, 20 years. And it's still 15 years out, okay? So, now we're going to talk about traffic just a second. And it's already been brought up. Y'all have done a good job of designing how you want that traffic to come out and leave that property and get on interstate. And I don't blame you. If I was developing it, I'd do the same thing that you're doing. But you're not giving enough room for trucks coming off, even though they're going to make you extend that back to the point where it's underneath the edge of the bridge. That's not enough distance. Count it up, guys. That's three tractors. Three tractor trailer rigs is all that is, okay? If you've got them coming off there 24 hours a day, coming in there and leaving every day, that's not enough distance. Now, y'all do a good job at what you do, but don't, don't do something just to get by. Do something to make it right. Put the distance in there that needs to be in there. You know good and well, it needs to be five, eight trucks and you can't get it. And that's the reason it's been proposed that way. Now, the other thing is, when those trucks leave there, they're going to leave whichever way that GPS tells them to. I don't give a darn how you drive, put your lanes in. It don't matter. You can put a concrete median out there. Them boys drive over them every day and they don't care. They're fine with it. If that GPS is telling them to go this way and it's going to save them 15 minutes, with them having time is all they can, they can only run a certain number of hours a day. So, if it tells me to hang a left, they're going to hang a left. Where I live right now, those tractor trailers are coming right across that bridge. I live, I'm the second piece of property on the right after you come across the bridge going toward 840. Tractor trailers come by there at least eight to 10 a day, at least that I see. Now, most of the time, my wife makes me work pretty hard, so I don't get to look up all that much. So, but when I do get to look up, I will see those tractor trailers coming by. So, all I'm saying is, I don't think we need this the way it's proposed. I know that piece of property is going to be something someday. I know that. But I don't like the idea of me getting more water than what I'm getting now. I don't like it. And I can guarantee you, this is going to cause me to have more water. And there's not a single soul in the county wants to help me pay my bills when I have to take care of that problem. Not anybody. So, please do what's right. It's not good enough. They've tried. Other people have tried, but this design is not good enough. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. For three and a half years, maybe three years, we've been talking about one proposition after another. And the same issues that existed then exist now and are probably worse. Now, keep in mind the name of the road, Sulfur Springs. There's also another road called Swamp Leanna. That ought to tell you everything you want to know. I'm just going to go ahead and say this. I will always oppose anything, especially, my sticking point has always been Shacklet Road. You cannot touch Shacklet Road. However, I opposed, I wasn't real happy about 840 coming in. I remember when it came in. I was opposed to a developer down Allen Road. I live east of Shacklet that connects Sulfur Springs and Leanna Road. I wasn't real happy about a developer that built houses on Allen Road. There's no development on Leanna Road. I'm not happy about that. But I am a realist. Something is going to come there. I've been saying that for three and a half years. Is this it? I don't know. But I want to mention two things. Water is going to be brought up. Every person that walks up here is going to bring up water. When I was a teenager, I moved out there when I was 14. I'm 56 years old. I remember being grounded one time and Allen Road flooded, which was rare. It's less rare now than it used to be. I swam underwater with a log chain hooked to my daddy's tractor, got in all kinds of trouble because I brought his tractor down there and my parents were gone and I had to pull the guy out of the water. The water has been an issue out there from day one, long before I was born. Ms. Whittenburg, it's probably an issue before you were born. It's always been out there. It's always going to be out there and it's getting worse. So, no, sir. I'm saying you're older than me and I'm not old. I'm not, I'm not saying that nothing could be done there. I'm saying if water can get handled, which I'm not sure it can because when we moved out there when I was a teenager, my dad had a sinkhole about this big round, had another little one. Now he has six. He's losing trees. Not because they're dying, because something's wrong with them. It's the underground water is washing the dirt and the roads and trees just fall when it comes to heavy rain. Trees fall all over Leanna. I have to cut some of them up. Water is a very, and these guys know. I think y'all know, water is a huge, huge issue. The trucks, the traffic, the highway department, taxpayer dollars, maintain county roads. Shacklet Road's a county road. Sulfur Springs is a county road. We spent, taxpayers spent, and I'm one of them, quite a bit of money redoing the Leanna or Nicest Mill Bridge recently. Ms. Betsy, it's a little better now. The bridge over Nicest Mill, it'll deteriorate in a very short period of time because of trucks. And we put up little Ghostbuster signs that says, red circle will slash, no trucks. You go into Smyrna, they've got huge signs with flags and flashing lights. Down Florence going in behind Nissan, seldom do I see a truck go down through there. I have a commercial driver's license. If there's sign up that I can see, I better do something else because I'm going to get in trouble. Ms. Clark, the video or the picture you showed of the Audi truck floating in the water, I was down there. No, when it happened afterwards, that guy got fined. He probably lost his CDL, but EMA billed his company for that swift water rescue. That was actually, the guy sitting on the hood of his truck and our EMA went out there and rescued the guy off the hood of his truck. He got billed for that, his company did. It's, I'm telling you, it's getting worse. Now, something is going to come there, but the water's got to be addressed and I don't have the answer to that. I'm not as smart as these engineers and planners and attorneys and everything else. Common sense tells me and experience tells me, this is getting worse and worse every single year. And the more growth, it can rain here and flood five miles down the road. Am I wrong? It's got to be addressed. We have grown to the point where I'm not so sure that water 10 miles from Leanna is affecting Leanna. I believe that. So, I'm not, I'm opposed to it because I think somebody said, well, go wrong place, wrong time. We've, we've, we've got to address the water issue in Leanna and just keep. And just keep in mind, the two main, or two roads out there, Sulfur Springs and Swamp Leanna, that's a big issue. Traffic, I don't even want to talk about car traffic, because anywhere you go in Rutherford County, it used to take me 10 minutes to get across town. Now it takes me like 45 minutes. That's just growth. And we've got a great place to live. That's why everyone's come here. They have because Nashville taxes are higher. There are people living in Coffee County that work in Nashville. I drive the interstates all the time. I've come from Coffee County to Rutherford County in the mornings, and it's a traffic jam. So, we're just growing. It's a great place to live. I want to keep it a great place to live, and we gotta be smart about the water, and I will. Chairman Phillips knows I want to be brief, but I'm never brief. I'll end with this. I will depend on our planning, engineering, the Planning Commission, whatever they decide is what they decide. I'm not for it, but like I said, something is coming there, and there's a day coming where I might stand up here, or will stand up here, if I'm, even if I'm not a Commissioner, and say, "This is a good thing." This is the best. I spent three years looking at plans, going to meetings. Rob, I feel like your family now. I've been to so many meetings at SEC and community meetings. Something is coming there, and I'm telling you, the ones I've seen, this is the best one. I'm not saying it's not the best, it's the best I've seen out of all of them. And another thing that, that kind of encourages me, that I'm, I'm, I kind of like the fact that it's not, these are local business owners established in our county, they're just expanding. And they want to stay here in Rutherford County. I love that. It's, I feel like we can, there's more trust there with that than others that, we don't know where they're coming from. But I will depend on this commission and our engineering and planning, and y'all have to make the decision. But again, just keep in mind those two roads right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. In case somebody didn't hear me to start with, we got three minutes.
Why you telling me that?
How much time do you need? I'm sorry?
I don't know. I'm gonna try to do it in three.
Our guidelines are three minutes, and, and
The bell.
We've let people go on, and it's probably my fault.
All right.
But, but this Planning Commission, okay, needs to hear specific
I got you.
And hold it to three minutes if we possibly can.
I'm gonna entertain you. You're gonna like my
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, thank you much. My name is Wendell Miller. I live on River Road, which is just across 840 from where all this is going on. I'm upstream. I'm not gonna talk a lot about the water, other than the fact that I started riding the school bus along Sulfur Springs Road in 1960. There's been water out there ever since, and I remember that when it would flood out there, we'd have to spend an extra 45 minutes on the school bus to get to school, just to get around all the water that was coming across Sulfur Springs Road before it hit Nicest Mill. So, the, the, there's not an engineer here anywhere that'll put their license on the line that can tell you what that water's gonna do. There ain't one around nowhere. They've had the same problem here in Murfreesboro at the corner of Loki Avenue and Memorial Boulevard. All the engineers threw up their hands on that one. They just made a big ditch there, because that water's going in the ground. They don't know where it's going. And so, that's all I'll say about the water. But members of Planning Commission, just to help you be able to do your job, let me remind you of one thing that we've got going on here. It's called spot zoning. In the planning books, it says, "Spot zoning is the process of singling out a parcel of land for use classified totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of the subject property and to the detriment of all the other owners." It is your job, it is your responsibility to protect those surrounding owners of that property. And one or two big buildings does not constitute, you can call it a pud, you can call it whatever you want to call it, it's an industrial use, because that's, yeah, there's some CS zoning spots around in the area, but that's commercial services. They're small in scale, and it doesn't affect the neighborhood. It's usually mom and pop type shops that are working out of their home. They got a shop outside, and they need a CS zoning to be able to have their repair shop or something. And it doesn't affect everybody around them. But something like this, in the scale that it is, sitting right there at 840, is just, is just a behemoth that nobody wants to have to look at. I know they've got it dressed up pretty and all that stuff in the architectural things, but it's the wrong use at the wrong place at the wrong time. I'll remind you again about what's gonna be happening with Cherry Lane Extension. And the property that the city already owns from, from, from 840 over to Murfreesboro Road, you know, when, when Medical Center Parkway fills up, that's kind of the next new nice development project that the city of Murfreesboro's gonna be working on. We don't want to be coming down 840, hit Sulfur Springs Road, and all we see is this big behemoth concrete block, wall building before you hit something that's nice. You know, just kind of like, just hold your gunpowder, you know, for right now, because something better is coming down the pike. And this big building, spot zoned in one little area right there, this is not it. This is short sighted. This is way short sighted for what Rutherford County can do. And what they're bringing is, you know, you can go to every, get out here on any street, every business out there's got a help wanted sign. The same jobs that our local people are trying to get to hire to run the restaurants and the shops and everything else are the same people that these people are looking for as well. So, they're not bringing anything to the table as far as employment. There's not anything in that that they're bringing to the table. And so, this deal is just, wrong place, wrong time, it's spot zoning. I'm glad they brought their attorney, and I'm glad they brought their other guy, because I live on River Road. I have those same sinkholes along my property, and, and I have water that comes up on my property, and now I know who to go get if they go out there and start drilling and blasting and causing problems. And that's all I've got to say. This is the wrong thing, guys. Let's just hold it, just hold off. Something better in the next few years is gonna come along, as Cherry Lane comes in, and, and we grow out there in Leanna, and, and we can make Leanna a whole lot better place than some big box sitting over there across the interstate. And that's all I got to say.
Chairman Phillips, Commissioners, I'm Will Jordan, 3923 Shacklet Road, and I will stay under three minutes, I guarantee. Before I start on what I was gonna say, I take exception to something Mr. Mole Chan said to start. He talked about the commercial services. Mr. Miller touched on this a minute ago, across 840. That's like saying, "I've got a garbage, my neighbor has a garbage can, let me have a landfill." I mean, that's, those are like, is on for little neighborhood businesses over there and want to have some industrial across, because that's, that's a stretch, in my opinion. But I served 15 years on this body, 16 as a Commissioner. I was very involved when we did the comprehensive plan several years ago. It's being updated now. And my question is, yes, the comprehensive plan says around interchange, there'll be some sort of commercial industrial type use, but how far does that go? This is the man admitted, over a mile of property they put together. I know of at least four pieces of property been combined, and just because you have the financial fortitude and ability to keep buying and buying and buying, does that go indefinitely? I mean, getting over towards Shacklet Road, you get over to the second side of that piece of property, you're getting a long ways from that interchange. In my opinion, that's not what was envisioned to be industrial property. I mean, maybe something right there on that, on that half, or that 40, 50 acres, or some, whatever the number is, but 157 acres, I don't think anybody envisioned all that being industrial. So, I'd just say, before you sit there and just say you've got a blank check to go the, a mile down through, you're getting a long ways from that interchange, and I think that's a little too far personally. But I've still got work to do, so I'm gonna leave after this and let you all hash this out, because I've got to go work on a rental house. But good luck to everyone of you, and I remember now why I quit being on the Planning Commission.
I will be under three minutes. So, I am not good at speaking at all, so forgive me if I cry or if my voice cracks, but I felt like I had to say this. That piece of dirt that you want to build on is my home. And my concerns are many. You've heard about the flooding, you've heard about the sinkholes, you've heard about the traffic, so I'm not gonna tell you anything you don't know. But that is my home. I don't have the money to lose my home because you blast and a sinkhole opens up, or because another sinkhole floods, or more traffic causes more accidents, and my job or anything else like that. So, all I can say is I'm completely against this, because this is my home. Thank you.
Thank you. I know in previous meetings, I've been one of the hardest ones to deal with, and I'll just apologize, but I also say it's for right reasons. I'm very proud of the team tonight. I heard some things that support our community, and I praise them for it. But I just share with the Planning Commission and the folks here, Leanna, our community is fragile like an egg. It floods. I have got more sinkholes than I ever had when I bought the place. I see the water flow, but no one's contacted me to see what I have to share. It's been very segregated. But I own property all the way up to Shacklet Road, right beside of it. But the real reason I'm up here is because I'm passionate about the community. I'm passionate about Rutherford County, my kids, we've lived here a long time, and we just love it. But there's places for industrial, and I'm a manufacturing guy, I'll tell you that. I built Bass Pro Shops, Master Craft Book Company. I've done it all, I've been blessed. And that does not belong in our community. Something does, the right thing, and y'all will make the decision. I hope that's right. But I'm pleading with you to just follow your heart, follow the knowledge, and follow the fact that you can't control this water. We can't, and we know that. Just pay attention to us and hear our pleas, please. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak, for or against?
Good evening. I'm Jim Hall. I live at 5076 Sulfur Springs Road, representing my mother, who lives right there behind me. I just built the house, I'm the last house. Before you get to the bridge in question heading towards Florence Road, I live across the street from Mr. Merv. Michael said everybody was gonna get up here and talk about water, and I was gonna try and not talk about water, but I'm gonna talk about water. If we are going to put a place of this establishment into that facility, and I'm a simple engineer, I went to school, went to college, but you take a coffee cup, and you go put a cup of dirt in that coffee cup full of coffee, where's the water gonna go? Where's the coffee gonna go? It's going to go somewhere. It's not gonna disappear. We talk about 25% of 157 acres, that might be the buildings, but the asphalt that you're adding on top of that, the piping, all the other electrical systems that we have to put in that place, it's going to push the water. Where's the water gonna go? It's gonna come right to us. If we were talking about this differently, and putting this facility on the other side of that water, we wouldn't be talking about it. They wouldn't do it. It's simple math. The water is going to go somewhere. The second thing is the traffic, and we've talked about it numerous times. You can put all the signs up you want. How many of us go out on the interstate and it says 55 miles an hour? How many of us go 58, 59? We're not looking at a sign. Those truckers are not going to look at a sign. I used to work for a Teamster car hauler that hauled out a Nissan. Those trucks are 80,000 pounds. They're coming through there now. Mr. Merv said it. Eight to 10, I think that's light. I'm out there cutting grass right by that road, come sit on the lawnmower with me when one of those trucks comes by. It'll make you cringe up. The trucks are not going to stop unless we do something about them. We're adding to traffic. Putting in a 250-foot lane, that's three trucks. You got Nissan letting out every shift. We've got 60, 70, 80 cars coming through there. Now you're gonna put three trucks in a 250-foot turning lane? Takes up the whole turning lane. Where's everybody else gonna go? They're gonna block the road. Traffic is going to be an issue. I ask y'all to reconsider this and not allow it to happen. I agree with everybody. The right plan will come along, and we'll put something in there that everybody will agree to. This is not the right plan. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Seth Schumate. I live on Shacklet Road as well, and I could just comment that you made a good point, that 20 years ago, that's when that dye study was done. I know when the, when the river is down, because I live right on the river, I'm there every day, when it's down to a certain level, there's still water coming out through that karst underwater river. And so, that's perpendicular to the stuff that we saw here on the maps. Of course, I don't know if that's the, the same vein, but it's certainly near enough by that if something were to disturb that, it might send more water my way, and who knows, maybe my house and my three-year-old daughter would fall into a hole. So, that's not something I really look forward to. Another thing is that, like, like you just said, your average truck is 80,000 pounds fully loaded. That is, that's 40 tons, so that's 15 more than they've already approved this thing for. So, we don't know when that bridge is gonna be fixed, so it'd be negligent to approve more trucks in the area. And that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Timothy Sanders II, and I live on 4711 Sulfur Springs Road. The proposed industrial warehouse borders, two of my property borders on a very large scale. I own a large pond that is spring fed. I know there's, excuse me, I know there's not many springs in the area, but I do have a spring-fed pond. And when it floods, it floods my entire property, except for my house, luckily, so. But this last year, it did come within five feet of our house, and my house has been there for 200 years. So, and it's been in my family the whole time. And the house has never flooded. But what really made me uncomfortable about the last flood in, last year, was that the only time in my entire life of living at this house that I've ever seen the water get so close to my house was the 2010 flood. And that was supposed to be the 100-year flood. But then last year, we had a flood that was almost just as bad, because the water came within five feet of my foundation to my home. And I have a shop next door, and it had a foot of water in the bottom of my shop. And I understand, the shop was built in a spot where maybe it is the 100-year flood plain. My biggest fear is that they could possibly make this
vehicles coming from Sulfur Springs Road. You look to the left and there's seven vehicles coming underneath 840 and four of them passed. This is Sunday at 10:30 in the morning with no traffic. And you have to stop and wait for traffic to leave. Now they're wanting to back up three trucks in front of us and if you wanna turn left, we've gotta dodge three trucks. You've gotta dodge traffic going in front of Hickory Lane. You've gotta dodge traffic coming from Nicest Mill Dam. And they say we're not near the traffic light. You know, I kinda disagree. But I'd like to ask the board members, if you were getting ready to move your location to another location in Rutherford County, would anybody be thinking about moving next to an industrial warehouse? And that's what you're asking us to do if you vote this in. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Doug, Mike, most of the conversations dealt with water issues in that area. Way I see our job is to determine whether this piece of property needs to stay where it is, which is residential development, or to go to industrial development. No matter which way it goes, however it's developed, water issues are going to be similar, correct? So if it remains RM, residential medium density, and a number of houses went in there, a plan would have to be submitted to handle that water, just like this industrial development. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we'd be talking about similar issues, maybe not identical issues, but similar issues. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
So what's our job tonight? Is to determine whether or not this piece of property is suitable for this rezoning or to remain as residential medium density. That's our job.
Yes.
And how the water's handled after that is your job. Is that correct?
I mean, correct, yes. We would evaluate any development, and I mean, I'll let Mike chime in if he feels the need, but any development's gonna come in here regardless if it's residential, commercial, industrial, it's gonna have issues with water, it's gonna have issues with traffic. Any development we look at, we're going to evaluate on our regulations as to whether or not it meets those, regardless of what the development is.
Commissioners, it's a difficult, difficult decision that we have tonight and I'm not 100% sure if, I'm looking at your faces and they probably look a lot like mine as to what to do, and I think all we can do is do what we think is in the best interest of the citizens of that area and then the citizens of Rutherford County as a whole. So ball's in your court. The chair will entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna make a motion. I wanna talk a little bit.
Marvin, you're not sure.
Doug and Mike, are there properties in Rutherford County that just flat do not need to be developed? And my thinking is that we're gonna look, you don't have to answer that necessarily. Thinking that we're looking at these things, I live on property that has sinkholes as well. I'm fixing to start going across fields here in a few minutes, that a couple of years ago, I had a tractor like to fall in one that wasn't there the fall before. Do we have problems in some of these residential subdivisions that maybe were done 20, 30 years ago, that we're looking back on and saying, maybe we shouldn't have put that there? And that's my concern for anything we put on a piece of property like this, is are we gonna look back in 50 years and say, man, we really messed up that neighborhood? Because sinkholes, underground water systems are a problem and you have no idea, as you walk across that property, how close and how much depth the soil has until you start working with it. It may be two or three feet, it may be 20, 30 feet. That's a lot of unknown. And I just think we need to be cautious.
Mike.
Michael, let me ask you, because you're the only engineer on this side of the gate, which makes you our expert. Understanding that this whole area, not just this site, but this whole area, is a geologic And no doubt that the underground water issues, although may not necessarily have been confirmed, but we likely cannot deny that they exist. Could, I guess my real question is, could a reasonable, affordable study adequately detect or reveal the issues that we've talked about tonight?
It would most likely uncover a lot of issues. Fortunately, there are rules and regulations we have to follow and there are what we have in our regulations called sinkhole drainage design requirements. There are several steps that need to be done, geologic investigations that need to be done, location and nature of underground aquifers, direction of flow, subsurface drainage associated with the sinkholes, estimated safe discharge to sinkholes to aquifers, potential for siltation problems, foundation problems that may be expected around the sinkhole, details of drainage structures built around the sinkholes. So there's steps after steps after steps that are required for any development if this were industrial, residential, commercial, anything that we have to follow.
All right. So I'm gonna ask your opinion, and I know, I know you're a civil engineer. You're not a geotechnical engineer, you're not a hydraulics engineer, you have a common knowledge of civil engineering.
Yes.
Disturbance of this site to do the standard protocol of underground utilities, foundation, excavation for foundation, concrete, the typical site utilities that would have to go on, how big of an impact, on a scale of one to 10, let's say, do you think would impact the underground karst and the, and the underground network of water flow in the whole, in the whole area, not just the site? Is it a slim chance, a medium chance, a heavy chance?
I'd say it's a heavy, good chance that any, I mean, you could be very delicate and still disrupt water flow underground. I mean, that's, that's the big mystery. We know a general direction that it's going. It doesn't go in these straight lines that you see on the screen. I mean, it meanders in this general direction. So we have to be very delicate. We don't want to dig down, open up connectivity to the underground aquifer, to underground other sinkholes. So we have to be very careful. I mean, this is, this is gonna be a challenge. I mean, it's, it looks rosy and pretty on paper, but it's, it's gonna be a very challenging site to develop.
Okay, so which leads to this question. This large warehouse-type site and the utilities that would be needed underground to feed it, would, are they more complex than a 150-home subdivision? Is there, is there less impact on that underground utilities?
No, we would have the same requirements. If they were to develop a residential subdivision here, I would want a geotechnical engineer on-site all the time.
I understand, maybe I didn't.
And a report.
Maybe I didn't ask the question correctly. Is, do you think there would be more or less land disturbance on this particular site application versus 150 homes slash townhouses? Which, which kind of development would disturb the soil at a depth of a couple of feet the most?
A residential development would have to be on a step system.
So you're clearing out a lot of?
You're clearing out a lot of land for that. So the smallest subdivision that would be allowed on a step system is 60 lots, I believe, that CUD would allow. So that's gonna be a large area of a, part of the sewage treatment, you know. So I think the industrial development might have a smaller overall footprint because your houses are gonna spread out and road networks, but it's gonna be a question of the depth to the aquifers, the depth to, you know, geotechnical irregularities that have, you know, that'll be uncovered with blasting.
Right.
You know, we're, it's gonna take a lot of prep work to make a pad ready for 1.1 million square foot.
Right. And either, whether you do a residential or this development, you're still gonna have to have detention ponds.
Yes.
Sizable.
Yes.
Detention ponds, okay. Let me ask this question, and Mr. Chair, cut me off whenever you feel like I've gone too far.
We'll stretch your three minutes out, Mike.
Okay, thank you. The Shacklet Road debate, why, why is there such objection of putting outlets or inlets on Shacklet Road? Why has that always been a heck no, you're not gonna touch it?
Well, I mean, it's, it's part of a large depression. I mean, that's.
But if you, if you.
Oh, you're talking about traffic.
Traffic, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant drainage.
Because if you built, if you built residential houses, you would have to put egress and ingress at Shacklet Road, correct?
Yes, yes.
And I will chime in a little here, and I agree. If this were a residential development, we would expect to see additional access points on the shack. We'd probably wanna see one onto, what was that, Walnut, I believe? Yeah, we probably wanna see one on the Walnut even. I think part of the issue that I, that I feel is a concern of the neighbors is how do you separate the personal passenger vehicle from the truck traffic? We don't want to see, obviously, any truck traffic along Shacklet Road. Personally, I'm not adverse to a secondary access for, if there was a way to at least keep it just to regular vehicles, to give them another way in and out onto Shacklet. I don't think Walnut, if this were the development that went through, I don't think that would be appropriate. But a access, an access point onto Shacklet Road for just personal vehicles without truck traffic, if there was a way to separate the traffic out, I think that's, personally, I think that's a good idea, just from an access standpoint. But again, how do you separate the truck traffic and keeping any 18-wheelers off of Shacklet Road versus going back towards Sulfur Springs? I think that's been the, the primary issue that, you know, we're concerned about, but also I know a lot of the people in the area are also concerned about.
All right. I guess my confusion has been, there's been such a, a negative discussion about the traffic at Sulfur Springs, but yet such a denial about not opening up an outlet at Shacklet. That, that part I just don't quite understand. And for now, I'm gonna shut up, Mr. Chairman, and let others have their, their day.
Traffic would be a major concern for a residential development, too. I, you know, I, I still think this intersection on the other side of 840 is, is a big issue with traffic building up, backing up on the ramps. At the end of the day, they, you know, people are still trying to migrate, go east, or yes, go east on Sulfur Springs, Leanna, to head towards big residential developments to go home. So that, that to me is still an issue. I asked them to check and see if there was any ways that the state could help us. I have not heard back yet that. The state, many years ago, did do a road safety audit from this, actually from 840 all the way out to Lebanon Pike, so on this whole route. So here's, here's the 840 interchange. They, they studied this whole leg all the way out to Lebanon Road and recommended improvements. Well, the county has already done some of those improvements, the highway department, and I'll try to get to it. So right here is this intersection. I'm sorry, for some reason, they put north down, go to a blow-up. So they've already made these improvements, but it still does not function well. It, it's a poor intersection with a lot of traffic right next to an interchange. That's, that's what I keep harping on, that, that needs to be addressed. That's, that's an issue that backs traffic up on the ramps. So I mean, if this were residential, I would still have the same concerns about this intersection. You know, if you're gonna propose to put 200 lots, single-family lots here, I would still say I'm having some issues with this intersection. That needs to be addressed before I feel good about this whole development. So, you know, it, it's been brought up, you know, we gotta fix Nicest Mill Bridge. That's got some, something to play with it, too. I mean, the highway department's, it's in the works to be repaired, but it's still an issue. I mean, I, we would look at this with, you know, the same intensity. So they've already made these improvements, but it still does not function well. It, it's a poor intersection with a lot of traffic right next to an interchange. That's, that's what I keep harping on, that, that needs to be addressed. That's, that's an issue that backs traffic up on the ramps. My, my opinion. So I mean, if this were residential, I would still have the same concerns about this intersection. You know, if you're going to propose to put 200 lots, single-family lots here, I would still say I'm having some issues with this intersection. That needs to be addressed before I feel good about this whole development. So you know, it, it's been brought up. Got to fix Nicest Mill Bridge. That's got some, something to play with it too. I mean, the, the highway department's, it's in the works to be repaired, but it's still an issue. I mean, I, we would look at this with, you know, the same intensity if it were residential, commercial, anything.
Mike, I could, first off, you know, I want to thank everybody that, that's come out tonight and spoke. I feel their passion for their area and their love for their, their community. And I appreciate the, the manner in which everybody has, has spoke tonight. This is a very challenging piece of property, but Mr. Chairman Phillips, I echo, I echo your sentiments 100%. You know, you know, we, we talk about what this property can do, or what, what's available. And we continue to have ideas and thoughts brought, but we brought up other ideas as well tonight about why it may not work. You know, we're, we're, we're going down a road of what we can't do versus what we think we can do. And I want us in a mindset of what we can do for this property, you know? Or, or if we can't, then, you know, we need to look at alternatives that are within the confines of what we can do that basically says there's nothing here is going to work if there's too much, you know, uncertainty that we have before us, which is what we all have heard tonight. There is optimism with the group that's brought us this plan tonight, and I do agree that it is of the ones we've seen in the past is by far, by far the best. And I like what they've, they've brought to the table. I like their, their thinking on this. But I just sit here and ask my question myself. You know, I don't want to keep having to come back up and, and deal with this continuously if we, if we don't see any insight. We keep, we keep hearing and saying, well, not now, not now. Well, I mean, we can, we can continue to say not now, but you know, and, and I understand the, the concerns, and, and there are uncertainties, and I, and I see that. And I, I'm, I've seen enough maps and stuff tonight that, yeah, it, it, it has a concerning aspect to it. But, and then I have concerns about the traffic. Coming, I came down through there a couple, three weeks ago, one afternoon, and the, the traffic to turn off and go back, back east on Leanna was, was backed up all the way down the interstate ramp. And I don't know if that, how that ties to this, but it, it is a concern. And you know, I would like to see something, you know, addressed about that, you know? Either in conjunction with this or, or before this. I mean, whatever we do out here is going to be a challenge. I mean, Mike and Doug, we, we trust you guys. We, we look to you, you know, as our, as our expertise in this area. And you know, I, I have a hard time supporting something that I don't feel like that y'all are in good, good with. If you tell me you are, even though there are some challenges, but it can be done. I'll consider that as the direction I would like to go. And you know, I hate to put you, put you on the spot, but I mean, Mike, can these challenges be overcome? In your mind, is from a professionalism, taking any, you know, any other stance? And what you know from a professional stance? Do you believe something can be done to make this site habitable that it does not adversely affect those in the community?
Yes, but I don't know if I've seen it yet. I don't know if I've, I've seen, I feel better about drainage. I'm still concerned about it. It'll still go through a rigorous review and design. But traffic, I'm still up in the air about. I'm still not sure about thinking that it won't impact the road network as it is now. So I, I wish I had, we have a, a, our GIS department has some drones. I wish I'd thought before this meeting to, you know, get some drone footage of this intersection, of the interchange during rush hour, so you could see what we see out in the field.
What are we doing to address that? What can we do, Doug? I mean, what can we do to address these issues in order to make, make us feel more comfortable about what we're doing here?
Well, I mean, as far as traffic goes, you know, Mike's talked a couple of different times about that intersection at Sulphur Springs and Leanna Road. Now, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, don't pretend to be one. But if that intersection functioned differently than it did, maybe if it was signalized. I think part of the issue that you see with the backup onto 840, and I've seen what you're talking about. Actually, when I was going to the neighborhood meeting on this very issue, I was coming from dropping my daughter off at work, so I hopped on the interstate to 840. And as I'm going on 840, I had to pull over to the left lane as I passed this exit. Because of what you're talking about, it was backed all the way up, because it was about that time, rush hour. So I don't think what you're talking about is an isolated incident. I think part of the reason it backs up so bad is because of that stop situation. Or there, the cars just can't free throw, free throw, flow, easy for me to say, through the intersection there. I think also that there are issues with the ramp itself. That was something that was talked about when we had a virtual meeting with the folks from TDOT that basically said, well, you know, there's maybe a couple of spaces there for somebody that wants to turn left onto Sulphur Springs Road from going northbound, I guess that would be, on 840 and wanting to turn left, going west. If there's a couple, two, three cars there, and there's a whole lot of traffic going back and forth, those cars back up all those other people wanting to go to the right. So, and you can see that on the, on the, on the picture right there, Mike zoomed into. So I'm thinking improvements to that would be a big help. If there was some way to make that left stacking lane a little more, or just provide a, a separate right-only lane going out, that would help. Couple that with the intersection improvements at Leanna and Sulphur Springs. That might, I won't say it will completely solve it. I think it would go a long way of alleviating some of those concerns. Of course, some of that is TDOT funding that we have to deal with. And what programs are there for possible intersection improvements? Is it even warrant something as far as TDOT is concerned? It's interesting, when you look at, I, I put in your staff comments, actually from TDOT's website, some traffic counts along those interchange, those on-ramps and off-ramps. It's on your iPads, because there wasn't really any other traffic counts that's right there at Sulphur Springs Road. And both of the, both of the ramps on the south side of Sulphur Springs Road were in the, as, the only count they had was from 2021, but they were both over 3,000. You know, that's average daily travel. The two on the north side were like 1,000. There were, I mean, not that, that, that's still a good amount of traffic. But you can see a lot of that traffic is either trying to come off of the interchange from the south or getting on to go toward the south. So that's where, that's a lot of this traffic is concentrated. That's where the issues are. So again, a lot of that's, you know, trying to get state funding to try to, to make some of those improvements.
Doug, the people of Leanna does not have the market cornered on sinkholes. South end of the county, and I broke front ends out from one of the tractors and then run them off in sinkholes. We've got, we've got, and every year, like Marvin says, and like they say, like they, they come, new sinkholes appear. They do, they just appear. I don't know why they appear. Mr. Alden could drop dye out there, and I don't know where it'd come up. But, but what I've got heartburn about this is a mile of industrial development in putting on the residents of this community. That's, that, that's a problem that I got heartburn with. Like, like Will said, how far does that go? I mean, you got, you got some commercial development off the interstate, but just honestly, how far does that go?
Well, and I'll say this, as far as our comprehensive plan is concerned, this area, and when you look at your staff report, recommends general urban type densities, which, which in the plan recommends up to 10 units per acre. Now again, this is, these are just recommendations. And it makes recommendations for, you know, commercial and/or industrial use. When we did the plan, we did identify some areas around interstates that there were about one-mile nodes. Of course, at the time, I, I forget exactly when this was made an interstate, but I think this was still state route 840 at the time. So we didn't actually identify a node per se right here. Now, you can see just from the zoning map, commercial uses, well, at least commercial zoning is popping up in the area. And you would typically see that around an interchange. I mean, that's not unusual. Land use maps are kind of funny as far as, they're not meant to be exact. They're not meant to be kind of like bubbles in a sense. You squeeze it a little bit more in one area, that you squeeze it down, it expands in other areas. So I've always made sure I told people that as far as the land use plans were concerned, especially our future land use plan, that, you know, just because an area is recommended for something, doesn't mean it automatically has to be zoned that way. You know, back to Marvin's question earlier about, you know, are there just some properties in the county that don't need to be developed? Are they out there? Oh, they're out. I'm not saying this is one of them. I'm just saying they're out there. I've had that discussion with developers and just people looking to do rezonings in general, that there are just some properties that don't need to be rezoned. Again, not making a judgment one way or the other on this one. I think something, I, I agree with a lot of the comments that were made. Something is going to be here at some point. Is residential, single-family the best? Being that it's right against the interchange? You know, opinions can differ on that. Personally, right against the interchange like that, you know, from my personal opinion, I don't know if that's the most appropriate. If you start going, you know, further down the road, a mile away, you know, what's that limit? You know, I, the plan doesn't get that specific with it. So, but again, I agree, something will be developed here at some point. And it's, like Mike said, it's going to have to meet the same criteria. It's going to get the same, the same standard of scrutiny that we're going to give it to any project, regardless of what goes here.
I also have great heartburn and sitting on the fence on this one, but when I, when I think about it, you know, it goes back to all the easy ones have been taken. You know, and this one is right by the interstate. It's, it's on the radar. And you'd probably think, and I never thought that I would say this, but I'm going to tell you the truth. This is a piece of property that two, three hu, or 400 homes, whether they be single-family, townhomes, whatever, bringing that many cars in and out of that property scares the heck out of me. It's, I, I just can't see adding that many people. So what's your, the next thing, you know, do you put an outlet mall that want to go there? They, they like interstates, big truck stop and have lots of trucks coming and going, just, you know, several, lots of them an hour, you know, maybe several a minute. You know, this may just be the best that this property is going to get. I just can't come up with anything in my mind that I'm, that I would be more comfortable with, to tell you the truth.
Looks like the chairman up there is sitting there like I need help. And I want to tell you, I think this is the third time I've sat through this piece of property. I could almost make a career, I think, of this particular property at the time it's come before this commission. And every time I've sat here and listened to this, and we've gone through this, I, I know the water. I know the sinkholes. I know the neighbors that are across the road, and how many times the different roads have come up, and what we've had to look at, and, and what we've gone there. But there's one thing continually sticks out in my mind. And it's how you get into this piece of property. I mean, it, it's like, for me, and that's what I'm looking at right here. It's that interchange and how a truck comes in and makes that turn. And they've worked hard at trying to make this development, but then you've got all of this that's back here behind it. And it's what we've all discussed over and over again as we continue to grow within Rutherford County is what we do for our infrastructure. And I've talked about this. I, I know the chairman's heard me say this. I, I know Mr. Damasi's heard me say this. It's as we've gotten more into PUD, and we've created some of these things, our infrastructure has not been there to help catch up. And it worries me. And just as our planning commissioner back here has talked about putting that many houses right there, that interchange is the same problem there. It worries me. And someday, real soon, we're going to have to change this. If we're going to make Rutherford County remain Rutherford County, what Rutherford County is. And what we got right here tonight, we're stuck here on this interchange for the third time. One way in, one way out, and that's it. And we're going to take these trucks. I don't know about you, but as I go down interstate, it seems like they get longer. And what we're trying to pull in there. And what we're trying to do with this. And we've got an infra, infrastructure problem right here. And also, if they happen to go back down Florence Road, we're caught into that situation back down that way too. The whole situation right there is not of the best of what we want here. We've had the discussion and, and the what ifs. If all of a sudden we start doing this and that, to what happens underground? I've got a piece of property within my district right now. We're in discussion with the city of Murfreesboro over. And it was somewhat in the same way. It's got a cave system under it, crevices in it, and water runs under it. And everybody's wanting to know what's going to happen if they're, they're wanting to build 200 houses on 68 acres. And what happens there once they start blasting and whatever? Same questions. And it sounds just like the same conversation right here. But my problem is what do we do with the traffic that comes in here? But Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. And my motion's based upon the fact of the problem with the traffic that we have right here. And the solution for the traffic is just not what I think is what we need. And we'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Item REZ22-014, Dustin Estes for SFG Murfreesboro. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, one, one thing, Doug. Is there any, we talk about this particular site. Is there any other property along, I guess, I guess it'd be on the east side? And anything going back with, maybe that where the Cherry Lane would be, that would fit into this same type of potential application as far as warehousing and/or? Is there other potential to, to see other things like this in that same general area in the future?
Well, in, if you're heading back toward town, the next interchange is, well, is at Broad Street. Of course, that's where the city is going to be building the, the Legacy Sports Park, right in that area. Of course, now that's not factoring into the discussion where Cherry Lane is coming in. And Mike will, I mean, kind of it's where that green property is right there. Yeah, thank you. That, when that is built and in there, that's going to be a new interchange. There'll be similar opportunities, I think, at that interchange. Going back to the north, I mean, really, I guess the next interchange would be Jefferson Pike, which you do have in some industrial land already in that area. You've got some that's in the county on the east side. But you also have that area Mike's highlighting there that was annexed into the town of Smyrna. That's a, a corporate headquarters-type campus, and I think eventually Rock Creek when you get further back. The next opportunity is a little further up the road at the interchange at the racetrack. There are opportunities up there, I think. Now, the biggest issue you're going to run up there, run to up there is just lack of utilities. But, you know, there may be plans in the works to try to extend utilities out that way. I, I'm not real privy to exactly everything that's going on out that way. But with the racetrack and everything else that's in that area, we would definitely be receptive to that kind of development at that interchange. Because it's already five-lane road, especially Bill Francis, you go back toward Lebanon Pike. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the, the, you know, the harmonious idea of additional things that, that meet the standards. You know, as far as, would there be other things that could potentially develop of, of same likeness, you know, in that area? things that could potentially develop of, of same likeness, you know, in that area? Where this wouldn't be the only thing, if we went this direction, it would be the only thing ever there in that area, you know? And I know that's, that's a big what-if, but, you know, being able to, to say yea or nay, this might not be it, but then something across the east side of the road does come, and, you know, it meets everything that we feel like in, you know, uh, again, just trying to think ahead. Um... I still like what the, what the team brought tonight. I, I think it's a workable solution, uh, uh, for the, for the area. Um, but again, understand the concerns of, um, that the traffic is still my, my biggest hang-up, I would say, as well. And so, thank you.
Rob, did you have something?
I appreciate you guys' discussion tonight. Had a lot of good, important points to take home on my book. And I know there's been a motion on the floor, but I would like to ask for a deferral, so that we can take what your, some of your comments tonight in regards to traffic and other things on that side, to see if there's something that we can figure out. Is there a solution that can make this project, or if it's residential, you know, if this project decides to walk away, just like the other ones have walked away? If that's the case, you know, the next option would be residential. I mean, by right, with the RM, you would get 157 lots. There is more than enough ample soil on the property for a step system to accommodate 157 lots. Um, other option would be a PUD. And I can be honest with everyone, as I've been honest with everybody even before on this project, I've already designed something for a PUD with, with small lots on it. And it's two to 250 lots, because there's plenty of soils on this property to do that. But I would like to ask for a deferral, so we can take and have the discussionary points that you all had tonight in regards to traffic and everything else on that side. Take it back with my team, see what we can do, talk with Doug and Mike a little more about the hydrology of this situation on this property. And that's my request, is I would like for, ask for a deferral.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. The suggestion to defer is improper without a removal of the motion and the second.
I, I would like for, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that, uh, Commissioner Reed consider that request by the applicant. Uh, it's, it's perfectly up to him, but, you know, he brought up a good point, and I think there's, it's residential, it's zoned. So, you know, there's things they can do tomorrow than, you know, I don't think we've wrapped our head around that completely to know for sure. But that definitely could be there and nothing, I mean, as long as it meets our requirements within the, uh, within planning, then that can, that can happen tomorrow without any say in this room tonight. So...
Well, right. Now, I will say, you know, based on what Mr. Mulchun was just saying, you know, if they went the planned development route, of course, we'd be back with this same process. But when it comes to just a straight, conventional RM subdivision, 15,000 square-foot lots, again, we're gonna look at it with the same scrutiny that we looked at any development. It's gonna meet our regulations, but there's not gonna be a public hearing for something like that. It'll have to be considered at a public meeting, yes. But that's a by-right situation at that point, if it's just straight RM. So as long as everybody understands that.
Are you saying that if I change that motion, that we go back to just a deferral? Go back? Uh, that if they bring it back, we can't, if the people can't have another public hearing?
Well, I think a lot of it depends on what they come back with. Um, if they, if, if it's deferred and they come back with something different that still requires a rezoning, then yes, there will be another public hearing. Notice, if, I'm assuming everybody out there either got a letter or knows somebody that did. If you don't live within a thousand feet, you wouldn't get a letter. That's why we put signs out there. But I'm in contact with enough of you all that I know that the word will get out, so that's good. But, uh, so if they bring back something that still requires a rezoning, then yes, there'll be another public hearing. Now, if they just say, you know what, we're scrapping this whole project, we're to come, we're gonna come back as an RM development. Again, it'll be on a planning commission agenda. It'll be at a public meeting, but it would be at our fourth Monday meeting, which is at nine o'clock in the morning, where we look at Platts and plans, not when we look at rezonings.
Correct. I understand that on the RM. I would, I would draw my motion. But I'll make a motion for the motion to be deferred.
Motion has been withdrawn. The second has been withdrawn, so we're back to where we were.
I'll make a motion to defer.
We have a motion and a second to defer. Let me ask for some clarification. We're deferring it to accomplish what?
To conference to find more information, to see exactly what can be repaired, what can be done about the infrastructure, as well as the underwater situations.
And let me just add this in there for the server to be clear. The zoning ordinance, when it comes to planned development, states that this body shall make a recommendation after holding the public hearing, and I'm paraphrasing, but they shall recommend approval, denial, or approval with conditions within 60 days after the initial consideration by the app, by, of the application. Now, that's if no other further, uh, requests for extensions are made by the applicant's team. If the applicant's team come back and says, you know what, Doug, we need another 30, 60 days to look at this, um, then they can do that. That's fine. Uh, but without that, this has to come back basically in two months. So just as long as everybody's aware of that.
Nick?
Yeah, just, uh, piggyback off of that. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard it, it's the applicant that's requesting the deferral.
Correct.
So we wanna make sure that they're consenting to this board, uh, deferring it. And you might wanna get clarification on them to know, because if it's the board that's doing it, it's gotta come back within the 30 days, right?
Sixty.
Sixty, well, within 60 days of the initial consideration, right?
Consideration, correct.
So you might wanna get Rob back up here to confirm, hey, when is this thing, when are we gonna see this again? Or do you consent for, do you consent for the board to, uh, consider this outside of that 60-day window, just so we're covered on our basis? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. I think he's coming back up.
I just wanna stress that if this were to stay RM, I would scrutinize it the same way. Traffic, drainage, everything. So, I mean...
To answer your question, yes, with the, with the deferral, we'd be looking at 60 days. So we'd, it may come back in 30, but we'll at least, you know, but then, based on what we heard tonight in regards to the discussion amongst everyone tonight, including the residents, that we're gonna need some time to at least get some ideas as to how we handle the traffic, how we handle the hydrology and that stuff. What kind of things can we do? Well, we can't, can't do at that point in time. So, yes, the, the deferral, we would like to look at the 60-day window on that side.
Okay. And I'll throw this out there, too, just for consideration. Uh, the county commission, of course, doesn't meet in, um, July. So even if you were to bring something back in 30 days for the June meeting, you're not gonna be able to go to the county commission until August anyway. So you've got some time built in there, regardless.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anything else? Mike?
Rob, lis- listen up. You can, you can go have your seat, but lis- listen what I'm about to say. Um, if it comes back a PUD, okay, we, we could've argued the fact that we could've turned this down tonight, or if this comes back a residential PUD or another light industrial, if they, if, if they changed this slightly and come back with a similar model. To approve the PUD, we, they have to prove that it meets the streets and the utility and the drainage has to be adequate. Okay? We, most of us were not convinced that the streets, i.e. transportation, need, needs were not met for this facility. Whether it comes back a residential PUD, same thing goes. The drainage, or the karst, or the underground rivers, whatever you wanna call it, not quite convinced that that facility portion was met. Same thing goes when it comes back 30, 60, 90 days, right? You're gonna look at that, we're gonna look at that. So we can turn down that PUD because, and we did, or we're, they're deferring, because streets, utilities, drainage features were not adequate capacity. So I want Rob to understand that maybe they need to invest on a broader traffic study that encompasses the three-way stop you're talking about. Maybe they need, if they're gonna stay with a light commercial development, maybe they need to phase it until that Florence Road, you know, maybe, is it Florence Road? The Florence Road Bridge is up to the proper capacity, weight-wise? So there's a couple of factors on either end that's gonna stymie this, I believe, until those two features get changed. And that is part of the streets not meeting, the street features not meeting the adequate capacity. I'm reading from our text, our county text. So I know they have an attorney here. That's why I'm reading it from the text. So we, I think, I'm like Everwater. I think this was the right development for this piece of land, but it's the same thing that I voted no a year or two ago, was the traffic. And maybe, and two other things. I'm sorry, Chair. I know it's been a long night. They don't have a TVA letter yet. They're talking to TVA, but I think Rob said it could take nine months. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that. And Doug, I, you know, we've mentioned TDOT and streets and conversations with TDOT, but has TDOT written a letter saying, yes, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna fund this, on any of those intersection changes?
Well, no, they have. I mean, all we've had at this point is talk.
That's enough. No, no was enough. So why would we wanna vote to continue this on if they don't have TVA letter in their hand, or they don't have a promise from TDOT that says, yes, you can make these changes, or yes, and here's the money, or here's when you can expect the money? Inadequate capacity. And nobody's giving them the letters to say, here's the green light. So maybe the right development, wrong time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Lee?
I'll, I'll keep it short, because I, I really feel like Commissioner Everwater is... Remaining 30 seconds? He left me there. No, no, the struggle, I've tried to organize my thoughts here. The struggle is, I, I agree that for the use of this land, that this may be the best thing, wrong time. But that interchange is gonna suffer if they put, you look at the, look, look around that area, look all around that property. There are no subdivisions with 250 lots. That, that would be the largest subdivision dropped in the middle of that area, right in that interchange. It is gonna mess it up. I don't care what you do. The other part of that is, this team of engineers knows what they're buying and what they're getting into, and they're gonna do the best they can to mitigate that. If you put 250 homeowners in there and they don't know what they're buying, and you see the history and you go show them that slideshow, I'd feel sorry for, for them buying that property that way. But that's a struggle. I'm going back and forth on the residential that's allowed now by right, or try to put something in there that is a decent use. They've tried to accommodate with buffers and everything else. So they're trying their best to help fit in the neighborhood. But yet, I, I get it. It's a, it's an industrial box dropped at an interchange, too. That's an interchange that's really a rural interchange. It's not built for the pigeon-forged traffic and the other things that, that, that exist around the state. It's, it's a rural interchange in a rural area that's trying to grow and develop. So that is a struggle, and I'm, I'm glad they're gonna take another attempt at it, the deferral. But, I mean, I've, I've been back and forth multiple times tonight. So just felt like I need to go on the record to say that.
Joining the club. But I, I've tried to refrain from making, uh, comments, uh, tried to, probably not been real successful at it. But I heard at least one person say that's a longtime resident of that area, that they're kind of uncomfortable, still uncomfortable with the footprint. We've got two buildings in there, and I'd like for the developers to at least have a conversation about those two buildings. And would it be more acceptable to the community if the footprint, the actual footprint, the building footprint, was reduced some, a little bit? Not talking about the main warehouse, but the one that really doesn't have a use for it at this particular point in time. Have some conversation there. Anything else? Okay. We have a motion and a second to defer item REZ 22-014, Dustin Estes for SFG of Murfreesboro. Other questions? Other comments? All who's in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye. Opposition? The motion to defer carries. Thank you. Let me go ahead and say that there will be no hearing at the county commission meeting in, in June. Uh, so the next thing that you'll hear will be a revised, some type of revised, uh, plan to come back before this commission at some point in the future, probably 60 or 90 days. And that makes it July or August, one of those two. Uh, and it'll also be the first Monday of that month.
Second, second Monday.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, first meeting, second Monday.
Second Monday. Uh, anyway, uh, you'll get a notice. It'll be the second Monday of that month, same time, uh, same place. Um, we've had a lot of, uh, of conversation from the developer, a lot of conversation from the commission. I'll take a comment or two from the general public about what we've done tonight, uh, if anyone wants to make a comment.
Okay, bring him up to the, bring him up.
Yes, come on up. Take your time.
As we're getting deferred, and then they come back and say, okay, well, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that, does the public then get a chance to make comments, to respond to what they're trying to do?
Right. If they are coming back with a revision to the plan, like something different in the planned development, they're still gonna have to come back here to this body. And there'll be notices sent out, the sign and everything that we normally do. So, yes, there will be another opportunity. Now, and that's kinda what we were talking about earlier. Now, if they decide to scrap the whole thing and just come back as a residential medium subdivision, RM, that wouldn't come to this meeting. That would come to our second meeting of the month, which is the fourth Monday.
But what Doug is saying, the property's already zoned properly for residential, so there wouldn't have to be a rezoning, there wouldn't be a public hearing.
If they wanted to do 15,000 square-foot lots, right.
Power to them, let them have it. Anyone else? I'll take one more comment.
I have, is, uh, is there any, I, I don't live within a thousand feet of that piece of property. I would definitely like to see the plans that they come back with before I come in here that night. I, I need to know how I can get a hold of those. That's what I want.
You can call our office directly. Obviously, if we have something, we'll do what we did. You can come by, you can come by office and look at it. Uh, we also, like this pattern book and everything that's on here tonight, we post them on our website, about, usually around a week and a half prior to the meeting. So, yeah, it'll be out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, would it benefit to have another?
Possibly.
Let me make one more suggestion. Uh, and before it comes back, I, I would suggest that we have another public meeting in the area, somewhere in the area, so that the residents could take a look at that plan before it came back to us and ask those questions. It might clear up, uh, some of the confusion that might be in some people's minds. So I would suggest, uh, Rob, that you'd have another public hearing and invite, uh, the planning commission, invite the planning staff, along with all the residents, to see what's different, uh, that you're proposing versus, um, what was proposed tonight, okay? Some, someone else wanna make a comment? I said the last one, but I'll, I'll, I'll take you. Come, come up, come up. You need to come up. You need to speak in the microphone. People on TV cannot hear you.
I understand, on one level, deferring it and coming it back and taking a look at the, any solutions they might have. But what I don't understand is, in 60 or 90 days, the infrastructure's not gonna be in place. The interchange is still gonna be the way it is now. The road is still gonna be the way it is now. Sulfur Springs is not going to be widened in 60 or 90 days. So I... going to be widened in 60 or 90 days. So I just, I just don't understand why, what's the point of a deferral? The infrastructure will not be in place then. Thank you.
Let me see if I can straighten that up a little bit. What would be different would be the plan would be different, the infrastructure, all of that would take a long term to come in place. I'll disagree with Commissioner Kush a little bit, simply because of the nine months and all those kinds of things. We pass a lot of rezonings with staff comments, which means that it's passed, but they can't develop it until all of those comments have been addressed, whether it's a month, six months, nine months, however long. So we pass a lot of rezoning requests with comments that the staff has, so that means that the developer cannot begin to develop that property until all of those comments have been addressed. That would include the TVA easement, so if that was a staff comment and it took nine months, nothing would happen until all of those comments had been addressed. So what would be different when they come up is they'll have a different plan, and this will be, hopefully they'll have a different plan, and this is what makes it different, then we will address those as to the timeframes and those kinds of things. Does that make a little bit of sense? I think one other guy wanted to speak, and I will cut it off after you. While this, while this gentleman's coming up, let me just say, your attendance tonight influences this commission. That's why we have public hearings, okay? Not all the time do we agree on things, but every time that you come influences this commission, because that's the reason we have these things. We want to hear what's on your mind. We heard a lot of issues about water, and please believe me when I say this, you're not the first ones that have brought that up. We hear them often and regular. Matter of fact, it's getting to where it's almost every particular rezoning that we go through. Our job is to make a determination whether this piece of property is appropriate to be rezoned. All of those conditions have to be met before the developer can start developing. So my job, the way I see it, is to say, this piece of property, is it, does it need to be rezoned into whatever, a commercial industrial development? And if the answer is yes, then it's up to these guys to make sure that it meets all the criteria and handles traffic, handles all of the water issues that we have. So our main job is to say, look at this piece of property, does it need to be rezoned? Is it spot zoning? All of those things, that's what we consider. We don't sit here and make determinations as to how we handle water and those type of things. Really and truly, it's not our job. It is our job through these guys, but it's these people who the developer has to satisfy. And a lot of it, we take the state into account too, and get the state involved in it. So once again, our job is to take a look at a piece of property and say, yeah, it looks like that's prime for rezoning, no matter what that rezoning is. And a planned unit development would give us more control than just a regular zoning that did not have a planned unit on it, such as this plan we're looking at now could be very close to the final plan, where just a rezoning, a lot of different things go in there. So a planned unit would probably be a better solution than just an industrial or commercial rezoning. So there's some things that we all need to think about, and maybe as we go into the public hearings, you guys can think about those things and, and try to listen to what their plan is as it relates to handling all the water and handling the traffic. And that's the reason I think it's real important that we meet together as a community and listen to what they, what they have to say. We've given them some things to think about, hopefully given you some things to think about too, because what's happening in Rutherford County is scary. I'm a native. I heard Michael Rather get up here and say he's 56 years old. I'm 74 years old. I've never lived anywhere except Rutherford County. My parents lived here, my grandparents lived here, my wife's parents lived here, my wife's grandparents lived here. This is not the Rutherford County that I grew up with, and it's not going to be the Rutherford County that we see 20 years from now. So we're all going to have to think a little bit differently. Our new comprehensive plan that we'll be developing over the next year and a half to two years will develop a vision as to what we, as a community, want our community to look like. It's important that you get involved in that. And there are community meetings coming up week after next, four of them, in four different sections of the county. Attend one of those. Input as to what you think your vision of Rutherford County needs to be, because that's how we'll develop that, is from input from you.
I can just piggytail, or piggyback, excuse me, after what you just said. Those meetings are actually next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The first, the times are all 5:30 to 7:00 for all four. The first one is going to be at Plainview Elementary School, that's on Monday. The one on Tuesday is going to be at Rockvale High. The one on Wednesday is going to be at Last Castas Elementary, and then the one on Thursday is going to be at the Town of Smyrna Event Center. So we kind of did it in quadrants, kind of see how we, how we did that. So I would, I would encourage you, if you can, come to one, come to them all. That's, but yeah, they're all going to be next week, 5:30 to 7:00. And if you've got questions about that, feel free to give me a call or look at our website. Actually, we have a website specifically for this, planrutherford.org.
I'm sorry.
My name's Kendall Baird, I'm one of the property owners. The last two times we've been here, this is just a request, a lot of the commissioners, y'all have questions, and once the public is closed, we, I'm sitting back there with my, you know, I want to answer some of them for you. We've got professionals, engineers, both for the traffic study, for all the others, that have answers to some of the questions you have. So just, I don't know what the procedural will change for that, not just for us, but just seeing things that go through this, for it to be more, whenever there are questions, if those, you know, if it can be directed back to the engineers, if there are ones there that can do it, because several of the questions y'all have and that you've expressed, we could answer. A lot of the, especially between the residential and the industrial use of it, we've put a lot of, a lot of time in figuring out the highest and best use for the property, and a lot of the questions you're asking, there have been hours and hours spent on that, trying to change the buffers to work, the traffic, the industrial is, you know, the shift changes are different, the direction of the traffic is different, residential is going to stack on it. So what we're looking at, if you're concerned with traffic, this is your best answer. But I mean, we can go into the details of that. We have done all five intersections. We've done a comparison of residential use to the industrial, light industrial use, and those things are there, and there's also things that Stone Mont is willing to do to help with those things. So some of the questions you have of funding of different things that are going there, there are answers to those. So just, and as you know, Rob's available if any of those questions, you know, we can answer them before, the same way with a community meeting. We're more than willing to meet with any of y'all to have that same thing. Residents can be available to the same thing, because we'll give the same answers. So I would love to have some kind of joint meeting with that, if that's something that interests everyone, so that we can get a lot of these answered at the same time. So just be your recommendation for closing that gap.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Very well. Our next meeting is scheduled for 9:00 a.m. It'll be a Monday morning meeting on May the 23rd. It'll be right here in this courtroom. Anyone else have anything? Commissioners, thank you for your time, your attendance, your participation. We are adjourned.